Well, thanks for coming here tonight, folks. I'm going to call the planning board meeting to order at 6:30 or 6:35 depending on whose clock you want to follow. And if you're here for the hearing, just take note that it'll start at 7 o'clock. We have two hearings this evening. They'll start at 7 o'clock, and between now and then we have planning board meetings to discuss, so please bear with us as we go through our minutes and do what we have to do. All right. Oh, let's do the minutes.
I'm on March 14th. Nobody has them except you. Those are the ones we've made a correction.
Oh, these are just need to correct.
That's just need to correct.
So nobody has any. So let's do March 21st.
I have an April 6th.
I got a March 21st.
Thank you all, sir.
that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month.
I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month.
I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast will be at a future date, so if you haven't been aware of the fact, it's going to be on TV sooner or later. So hope everybody has a good time tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Our ratings go up every month. I just want to interrupt before we continue because I don't have the standard notice that I generally read, but as I understand it, we're being recorded when this broadcast Is that anybody? Miss anybody? Open Space Committee Chairman, Jassy Breck. CPA Chairman, Jassy Breck. All right. So I want to entertain a motion to recess the planning board at this time in order to convene the public hearings. A motion to recess? Second?
Second.
All in favor of recessing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go vote. Planning Board will stand in recess until the conclusion of the public hearings. And as such, we'll begin with our seven PM hearing, which will be for Article thirty-two. Let me make sure I get this correct. Well, it doesn't really matter. I'm not gonna refer to... Yeah, it's Article thirty-three. I beg your pardon. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Hubbardton Planning Board will a public hearing on Tuesday, May thirty-first, twenty sixteen, at seven PM in the senior center of the Slate Building, Center of Main Street, Hubbardton, here, public comment on a proposed amendment to the Hubbardton General Bylaws by adding Chapter twenty-seven, importation of material, Section one. Proposed article submitted by initiative petition, citizen initiative petition, would read, "No person shall import into or deposit within the town of Hubbardton any hazardous wastes or contaminated soils taken from without the town limits, including but not limited to those wastes or contaminants or soils as defined in DEP policy number COMM-ninety-seven-dO-one, comma, DEP policy COMM-ninety-four-double-oh-seven, comma, DEP policy COMM-fifteen-oh-one soils defined in three-ten CMR four-zero-point-zero." This notice was duly published in the Gardner News and also posted in two prominent areas here in town. And let me just go over the guidelines for a public hearing that we use. The author of this particular motion will be asked to give a presentation, at which time the members of the board will be able to ask questions or make comments. And when the board is satisfied, then we'll open it up for public comment. Please feel free to ask any question you would like. And also, if you have any opinions, we also recommend for those to be heard as well. Questions are good, but we really would like to know what you think about any particular thing we have hearings on. This is not gonna be a debate, however. We're not debating any issues. Questions will be asked and answered, and hopefully they satisfy you, but please just keep it to the question and answering and comment, if you will. So Mark, Mark Dimick was our author of this. Mark is, as I mentioned, an Associate Member of the Planning Board. He is, however, not acting in any capacity on the planning board. He brought this forth as a citizen's initiative petition. Mark, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Dimick, official of Hubbardton Mass, and then said, um, he can't find his citizen. Mark is a member of the planning board. I also have the flash drive for the slideshow presentation that I might be able to show this evening.
Okay.
I'm gonna, um, go from being a planning board member to sitting out there as a citizen. I think you have to do that.
While he loads that, the purpose between, uh, behind these bylaws was brought to my attention that there seems to be a desire to remove hazardous-type materials from in and around the Boston metro area, other urban areas in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Some of these have been watered down, if you will, that at one time were considered highly hazardous. Now they're not considered quite as hazardous, but all of the materials that are outlined in this particular proposal have a hazardous waste component to them. Although maybe small, but small amounts put together add up to a lot. There are, this isn't against any one particular proposal. There has been some discussion from one company about possibly bringing the second material to town, but there are numerous areas in town where this material could go. And it could become a huge problem for the town if millions of the items of this material were brought in. In my opinion, again, this is only my opinion, I don't think the town wants to become a hazardous waste dump. And that's why I brought this initiative forward, uh, for the town to consider. With that said, we move to the next slide. That already talks about what Vinnie just read. Uh, this talks about what types of materials are involved, types of policy, the COMM. And all this information is online. This slideshow will be online shortly. But as noted in the bottom, the slideshow will be resolved to the Boston Big Dig and other urban construction projects. Not necessarily limited to the Big Dig, but in and around the entire state. Next slide, please. Basically, what happens is you have contaminated soil, uh, or urban historic fill, oil, hazardous waste, et cetera. And it's brought to what could be potentially an online landfill, if you will, um, outside of the affected area, what area that it comes from. The cost to remove this is significant for the developer or property owner, and it's, um, you know, a significant gain for the people receiving the material and processing and transporting it through. It's tested, but it's already been determined this is hazardous material. So basically determining that the material you're testing does have a hazardous waste component to it. Next slide, please. Top Pats article we already talked about. DE policies are aimed at reducing disposal costs around the projects. Basically, what they're looking to do is get this stuff outside of highly populated areas and into areas that aren't as highly populated and basically push their garbage onto, um, I guess, most fortunate communities. Next slide, please. Again, if it's a win for the people in the affected area because they get rid of the material that's less than desirable, not a big benefit for the community receiving the material. The state's held harmless. There's no recourse against the state if anything ever happened. Yeah, let's slide, talk a little more about that.
Next one?
Yeah, next slide.
I'm looking at it. What's this dump the waste on anywhere in the world?
Well, that's, it can be put anywhere, as long as, you know, permits issued for property. It's not limited to an old gravel pit or an old quarry, you know, anywhere where you have a giant hole. That material could potentially be permitted to. These are the types of materials that are listed, although in low concentration, they are listed in all these policies. So I'm not gonna read them all, but you can see there's copper, nickel, lead, zinc, mercury. And again, in small concentrations, they don't cause a problem, but as you'll see on the following slide, a lot of it could be a big problem. Next slide, please. Here we have, again, don't be fooled by low concentrations. We have three million, for example, this is not for any particular project, but as an example, three million tons of waste at a very low concentration could be up to six hundred tons of contaminants. Now, that's pretty significant, you know, as, when you're talking at maybe one or two pounds per million, it may not seem significant, but when you bring in millions of tons, it could be quite significant. And again, as noted, there are multiple contaminants that could be present in these soils. Next slide. This is an example of what we talked about. This is only an example of one illustration of three million tons. Twenty-three tons per truck could equal one hundred thirty thousand trucks coming into town and going out of town. And there could be numerous sites around town that could have this type of activity. And I'm also sure the town really wants that, and that's why we moved here, to be subject to that type of activity. Again, there's no benefit to town to have this. Why would we want that? And this area, there's an area two minutes from here that would be ripe for that type of material. So it'd be going right by Town Hall, possibly by the school. So again, this is one of the reasons why I believe, and in my opinion, we should allow this type of material to come to town. Next slide. What could possibly go wrong? It's always a potential for drinking water to become contaminated. This is online, potentially online areas. Again, you've got these toxins going into the soil. They don't typically reach up, they go down, but what's under the ground is groundwater. You know, it's more than a third of the towns have lost all the passage of drinking water to toxic contamination. Now unfortunately, the town of Hubbardton doesn't have municipal water. So if anyone's groundwater were to become contaminated, or another community's groundwater becomes contaminated, it would be quite costly for the town to take care of that. And there's always this risk of having this happen. It's kind of like if you play with matches, you have to get hurt sometime along the way. If you don't play with matches, your chances are slim. But by allowing this type of activity, you're allowing that type of potential. Next slide. These are some of the towns, and I'm not gonna read them all, that have had problems with their drinking water. And it's all public information. A lot of lawsuits going along. There was a movie written about one of these sites. It might be for the slide of anyone. These are different sites in the town that have had hazardous waste, and I'll notice that they're mostly east of us, in the highly populated metro areas. And what they're looking to do is get that stuff out of there into less populated areas, because they don't want it. Another thing to keep in mind, too, is they're paying to get rid of this stuff.
What's the tier system here?
The tier?
Tier one A, tier one B? There are different, um, DEP rankings of site designations. What's worse?
One.
One A? Let's do something here. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Where's the definition of a...
For those who didn't hear, the question was, what do the tier one A mean? And here's the answer to that.
So you can see there's various stages of different type of contamination. Some is very low and some moderate, but again, it all has some type of contamination.
These laws are really dense. This stuff, I mean, there's an attempt to answer a question, but you gotta peel the onion down two or three times.
Next slide.
I'm sorry. This is hard.
But you're doing a good job.
So which is worse, A or C?
It's got the highest score.
Can you explain that, Tom?
No. Mark asked me the same question, and I found this document. Suffice it to say, tier one is more heavily concentrated than tier C or D even. But, um, even, even C, if you read the last sentence, requires a permit and whatnot. So they're all, they're all relatively, um...
He's talking about site leases or the sites themselves? I'm kinda confused, too.
Well, maybe we're in over...
These hazardous, hazardous sites?
There's Hubbardton, right? The middle there? It's got one button on it. Because a few years ago, Mr. Mike's gas tanks, underground gas tanks leaked. And that's one of the, of the typical, I don't know, I think that's a, I don't know what rank that is, but if you look real close, there are different colors. Lot around Springfield, lot around Worcester, lot around New Bedford and those areas. Lot at Hubbardton. And up west, it's pretty sparse.
So this is site, this is, these are releases, these are actual
Historical releases.
These are, these are, these are sites that we have material being stewed. These are environmental problems that occurred at a site?
That's correct.
Okay.
These are toxic releases.
Gotcha.
At what level would street sweepings be considered?
I don't agree with the street sweepings law, but they are...
Street sweepings, since street sweepings are contaminated waste.
Yeah, exactly.
They're hazardous waste.
Be the lower level, maybe?
If you Google "street sweeping," you can come up with a lot.
Yeah.
The first is...
Yeah, what I, what I remember from solid waste, I used to work for DP. Street sweepings are, can be used by the DPW for road projects. So they can retain those and reuse them.
But street sweepings, stumps, uh, all those kind of, uh, materials that are not commonly being disposed of in the town pit would be considered hazardous under this bylaw? Would be considered hazardous?
Are these all already dumped in down there, you know, town pit, contaminated?
Why don't we hold this a complete discussion until we finish the presentation?
Okay, good. Save your questions for...
Hi, what could go wrong? Again, it could happen. Drinking water contaminated, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the affected area. You know, there have been cases where groundwater has been contaminated miles away from the potential source. Could happen groundwater from the community. Housing values could decrease. You know, I don't think too many people would want to live next to a, a site that we see contaminated soil or a dump or a former dump, et cetera. So it would certainly have an impact on certain housing value, which eventually affects the tax base of the community. Next slide. Again, just mention the tax rate could be reduced, et cetera. Tell me the truth, some towns are over a million or even a billion dollars cleaning up some of these sites. Again, if the town weren't entertained such a proposal like this, it'd probably many, many years before anything could ever happen. You have monitoring wells, but they're not gonna give you much benefit. Once you find out you're contaminating groundwater, you'd be responsible for cleaning it up. Not likely, the responsible party's going to want to be involved with that. So the town's gonna get stuck, or the city, or well, past these types of laws, with the cost of remediation. That could be quite costly. And again, you don't know, but why take the chance? Like, there was a movie, Civil Action, starring John Travolta, was about a site in Massachusetts that had hazardous waste dump on it. It was a little bit higher concentrate than what maybe proposed on some of these sites, but again, it happens. Next slide. And it was responsible. Well, the law says the response, the owner of record. There was a site in Ashburn that back in the sixties and seventies was purchased by a company out of Fitchburg as a parking lot for their beach, which was across the street on some waterfront. Throughout the sixties and early part of the seventies, they dumped oil on the ground and sand to control the dust in their parking lot, much like a lot of cities and towns did on their roads. A lot of us probably remember oil and sand in the roads, particularly the back roads. It was a pretty common practice back then. Well, eventually they stopped that practice because they stopped using that property. Uh, twenty years later, two wells in the neighborhood, one directly next door and one over a mile away became contaminated. I had all the professionals, they were able to trace the contamination back to this particular site, and they found that as a result of that practice that happened twenty years before. The owner of record, which fortunately for the community was still a party that placed it there, was responsible for cleaning it up. They had to remediate the site, they had to run town water several miles from the source of most of this town water, down the entire road this is affected on, and they had to pay the people that were affected. It cost them millions of dollars. A lot of cases, you know, if the town weren't entertained these types of proposals, twenty years later, it's not likely to be responsible or a regional party would have anything to do with the property. Wouldn't really have a high value to anyone to buy. So most likely, it would go back to the town. So if something were to happen, it could cost millions of dollars to clean up. And again, it's so much speculation, but there's always that potential there, and it does happen. Next slide.
Wait, before you go there, Mark, will you go over this? Make sure this is a slide that you summarize them?
Yeah, I can summarize.
Example, would you go over that slide?
Yeah, well, basically, when these types of activities happen, LLC is created for the host site. And the other ones in control of the property, the other ones receiving the money, the other ones processing the material. And then typically, when the project's completed, um, that corporation's dissolved. Typically, those corporations don't really have any assets, so there's not a lot of personal exposure to anybody in the LLC or in that corporation if something were to go wrong under their ownership. If they were to be sued, again, they've got no assets, they've got really nothing to lose. So when it comes to something like that, it typically winds up being either a state, cost to clean up, or it goes back to the municipality. costs to clean up or it goes back to municipality. And again, typically, you know, typically, it's many years later when contamination occurs. And in a case of like Hubbardston, I think you find the community being the one responsible for the cleanup. All right, thank you. Next. Again, I'm putting it out there as a citizen's petition. In my opinion, I don't think the town should be entertaining this type of activity. It's my opinion, of course. It's up to the board this next week to consider at the town meeting. Again, I don't see any real benefit for the town to have this type of activity. It's not really going to be a source of revenue for the community, and I think it's a big potential risk for the community in the future. And it would be an immediate risk for the abiding properties. And again, there are multiple sites in the town. You go to Google Earth, and you look down, there are all the holes and gravel, abandoned gravel pits in town, abandoned plate pits in town. There are a lot of areas that this potential material could be brought to.
In Rutland, it wasn't a gravel pit. It was a farmer's field. And I think...
Excuse me, Tom. If you want to make a statement, you're part of the presentation, will you stand up and say it to everybody?
My name's Tom Robinson. I live in Brooklyn. I recall reading newspaper articles about Jordan Farm, and it was a farmer's field where it was deposited. They picked up all the topsoil, put down all the waste, topsoil back there. Four hundred thousand yards, I believe, was what, four hundred thousand tons was planned there.
So again, like I said, there are numerous places in the community that could potentially accept this material. It's not necessarily one particular area. That's really all I had for my presentation. If the board has any questions that I might be able to answer, I'm like soil's expert. I'm just basing my opinions on what I read and whatever.
What do you do for a living, Mike?
Home builder.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Mike or Tom?
I'm getting you. What you're talking about is already prohibited. You're not allowed to take hazardous waste and bring it somewhere. It's not allowed. You get to break the landfills, it gets to be treated properly. What happened was with DEP, they were regulating hazardous waste, but the clean soils were getting moved. And people needed some assurance that the clean soil that they were moving was the clean soil and not the hazardous waste. So they generated a policy to guide people, to give them some assurance that the material that was being moved was clean, cleaner than whatever background you're bringing it to. So it has to be as clean as the area you're bringing it to.
Well, that said, my interpretation of what I read is it's not particularly clean as we think of clean, because it has, everything I've read, it has a hazardous waste component to it.
If the truck meets these criteria, it goes. If it doesn't, the licensed site professional can make adjustments. This is really hard to read, too, but it's the best I can do. This is a newspaper article, "Soil Disposal in Rutland Raises Spears: Town of Rutland Has a Problem." Tons and tons of mildly contaminated soil from sites in Boston and Cambridge are being dumped on a private farm because soil is not contaminated enough to raise red flags with the State Department of Environmental Protection. It is largely unregulated. Town's environmental safety and health is being ensured only by the private businesses profiting from the soil's disposal. The state has privatized this operation. That has left some, that has left the residents of Rutland to fend for themselves as calls, as calls for the DEP to get involved have fallen on deaf ears. For months, town residents have been fighting to put an end to the project. Rutland has found some allies in Worcester because the farmland receiving the soil is surrounded by wetlands that feed into the water supplies for Worcester, Rutland, and the whole lot. Here's a quote, "There's something fishy about this deal, and it's doubtless worth," said Phil B. Gerren, Director of Environmental Assistance for the Worcester Department of Public Order. "Someone is getting money through this deal. We're concerned that the ones profiting the most from this are the ones in charge of it." The state DEP negotiates this legal document with the guy who's going to be doing the dumping. The guy doing the dumping puts forward the proposal, and the DEP massages it and negotiate back and forth. The guy on one side of the table wants the most liberal acceptance criteria possible because he's going to go get money for dumping the material. The DEP wants control, but as you can see, they're not bringing it down to zero. And the DEP is incentivized, I believe, because the executive branch of this government, state government, wants to move this material from these construction sites out. Otherwise, Boston's construction sites will slow down, get more costly for those guys, while this end gets more costly for us. I just read this paper the other day. Worcester's building something at the WRTA, the transit facility down there, and they found cyanide, and now the project has to stop because they don't have any place to put it. These are serious, serious issues. But you can't solve it by just schmearing the problem around the whole state. But anyway, state DEP policy 15, that same policy, allows towns to consider truck traffic, noise, dust, odor. They give you some input, but they don't give you the big input. They don't let you talk about the types of soils or contaminated waste dump. You don't decide that. They're going to decide that for you. The administrative consent order is a private negotiation between the state DEP and the waste dump. This is a private operation. This is a business. This is not a state watching out for you. I actually went to the DEP, and I said, and I knew they were working on a consent order, and I said, "Hey, can I get the consent order?" And he said, "Well, we're not done yet." I said, "Well, what do you mean? You're a public employee. You're spending my money to do this work. And I can't see what you do? I can't walk in your office and look over your shoulder?" And he said, "Nope. Administrative consent orders are private." Now, they go public after they're all signed, but the negotiation process? "Oh, I want a little more oxygenated, a little more lead, a little more mercury." And someone might push back on that. And they end up with a... Where are they going to be? And of course, a lot of people make a lot of money off it.
Excuse me, Tom. Who's administrative consent order were you looking to see?
Dudley.
Dudley?
Yep. Dudley just got it in, I think, February? What? It's the 4 million cubic yard one. I got it now because it's done side up. I'm dying.
The policy may not indicate the type of soil, but it does say the town has the ability and should first issue the permits for it or deny permits. If the permit's denied, this doesn't go anywhere. It says it right in there. If there are permits required in any of those permits, it's a no-go.
Well, let's say you give a permit to Jimmy, and Johnny comes along and says, "Well, I want to do this, too."
Every site's different.
State law says you cannot apply a law in a discriminatory manner, and you cannot apply a law that goes against state law. State law trumps town home rules, although we have one of the strongest town home rule constitutions in the United States. So if you regulate something, and you give it to Jimmy, you're going to have to give it to Johnny. You might set different conditions, but it's very, very difficult to say no. If you prohibit something, you've said no to everybody. You're being fair, not discriminatory.
Have you got much longer to go, Tom? What kind?
Oh, I can go for a week. All right. Oh, there's some more. Ten times more contaminated than what we thought. Interim policies and guidelines aren't regulations. They're flexible, they're negotiations, they're not really involved with the town. They're between parties and governments. Rutland has a plan going forward. It goes on today. I've seen the trucks, four hundred thousand tons. Existing laws and regulations and policies are incredibly complex and therefore abusable. Hubbardston needs a simple, strong prohibition. End. Thank you. Sorry to bore you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Well, keep going. Policies at DEP, I worked at DEP for 30 years, and policies are developed to explain regulations. So they're not random. They're to interpret based on case law, whatever. A policy helps people to understand the regulation, guidances and policies.
Anybody from the public like to ask any questions or make any comments? Yes?
Yeah, the question that I had was around the one every 67 trucks. Marianne said that it was very expensive to get rid of really dirty dirt, which is why they're putting clean dirt. And this is why they're trying to do it in Hubbardston, but they're only testing one out of every 67 trucks. My question is, what is there to stop those other 66 trucks containing dirty dirt? Who is monitoring where that truck started out? Who is monitoring where it stops on its route to Hubbardston? Who is monitoring what it's dumping in Hubbardston? Because we're only testing one out of every 67 trucks.
What if the 67th truck is the only clean?
Exactly.
And in addition to that, I didn't bring it up, on the soils, sewer soils policy, they don't require a bill of lading.
So, and it doesn't get tested on the other end of the...
Yes, it does.
Hold on just a minute. Is that so? Because we have an answer to the question.
Oh, you want it?
Go ahead, Mary.
I have read some soil management plans, and one example is, one, every 50 yards is tested. Every 50 yards, that's two dump trucks.
Where?
Leaving the site. And every truck has a bill of lading, and there's a person at the site that receives that bill of lading and verifies that that truck, it's sort of like a chain of custody.
But they don't work, they don't work for a town or state. They work for an LSP.
Right. The LSP, there's, in the case of that reclamation soil, there's an LSP that's at the site, and there's an LSP that's hired by the town, selected by the town, and paid for by the person that's receiving the film. So they're responsible for paying for it. The town selects the LSP.
Licensed site professional, soil professional?
Licensed site professional.
Anybody else have any?
Yes, sir. Jeff LaGro, City Gardener Conservation Agent. My question is a follow-up to that on the same note. I do have some concerns, but in that particular regard with the sampling. So I might understand that the sampling is done in intervals per every so many numbers of trucks, either every 33rd or every 66th truck, something to that effect. Is that how it's done?
Go ahead, Tom.
The 67th truck is my calculation. The administrative consent order says you will test every so many hundred tons or so many thousand tons. I took the thousands of tons designated in the administrative consent order, 1,600 in that case, and divided it by 24 tons per truck and came up with 67 trucks. The consent order says you've got to test so many hundred tons or thousand tons.
But it's still not random. It's not a random sampling technique. It's a...
There's a technique on the truck, but there's no technique like you take a little bit from each truck.
Right. Okay. Because my point is that if it's based on a certain number of, you know, tonnage or yards, there's nothing random about it. I mean, at some point, you know, you'd know when the tests are coming. Even, you know, any scientific tests are usually based on a random sampling method. And, you know, even steroid testing in sports is based on random sampling. I mean, you know, these players figure it out pretty quick. If you know you're going to get tested every 10th day or every number of at-bats, you're going to know when the next test is coming.
Well, Penny, I've worked on some of the sites, and what you're talking about is when they're testing as it comes in, the sites have already been drilled, and there's a grid laid out on the site, just like a checkerboard. And they say, "This is going to this place, this is going to Maine, this is highly contaminated, this is going to go to Rutland, this is going to go to Hubbardston." And then what's coming into the pits gets tested with the numbers that you're setting.
I agree with you. We had one party come through a planning board meeting, and he told us about how trucks jumped the line. I believe it happened in Chelmsford. And Chelmsford was in some form of trouble because of that, Chelmsford project.
But he'll have a bill of lading from, you know, when you load, and they know what's, what exactly the material is that I've bill of laded.
Here's policy.
That I've seen.
Here's the waste site cleanup policy, 1351. Soil managed pursuant to 310 CMR may be transported using a bill of lading, BOL, but the BOL is not required.
Yeah, I've never seen a bill of lading.
This is from the document, not from you.
It's always like clean and blue.
The information here is all wrong. I need to speak.
Wait, what, Norman?
No, just a moment. Just a moment. Excuse me.
I just have a question.
All right, so wait. Just, whoa. Can I have a minute, please? Again, you know, this is a public hearing. We're willing to take comments and questions, not a debate. So I don't want to get into a, you know, he said, she said. You know, please, if you have contradictory information, that's fine, but we're not going to debate it. Want to go first?
Good.
Yeah.
I'll let her go first.
Well, I had a question first. Are you going to give the presentation?
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah. My name's Deborah Marsworth. I'm an environmental consultant and a hydrogeologist, and I wrote a soils management plan for Hubbardston. And I want to play, this is your soils management plan. You can test, this will be given to you. The state will not write the consent order until the town of Hubbardston approves the plan.
You have a soils management plan for us?
For the town, for the town of Hubbardston to manage soils, non-hazardous soils.
And who commissioned that plan?
This is from, this is from Norman Brown asked me to put together a soils management plan that would comply with DEP policies and regulations.
Would you explain who Norman Brown's?
Norman Brown owns the land on Pitcherville Road where the...
Why is that relevant to a soils management?
Because you have to manage soils if he wants to bring any soils into gravel pit that he owns. They have to be managed by the state. The town has to approve. The state won't approve it until the town approves it.
So you're saying that Mr. Brown wants to bring soils into his gravel pit? He's commissioned a soil management plan by you?
Everybody in town knows that.
Well, Mr. Brown, that may be true, but I want to state it for the record.
Okay, go ahead.
And I want it made clear, because we're not here to hear your plan, we're here to hear comments.
I'm not here to discuss my plan.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Of course, you've introduced it now to the public record, and I wanted to clarify.
Okay. So I've listened tonight, and I understand your concerns. I actually applaud your concerns. My background is in the environment, but also to represent the public. And I was on the Licensing Site Professional Board for six years as an appointment, because what the licensed site professional is, is that the state has licensed individuals to act on their behalf, is privatized. So they act on behalf of the state in monitoring what we call wastewater cleanup, but now on other sites as well. So my position on there was to represent the public, because I've worked in the past on superfund sites as a technical advisor, like to Wells G and H and Industrial Flex or Citizens Group. or Citizens Group. I've also worked for Citizens Group.
So it's just...
In fact, no, this is important, because what I recommend, based on everything that I've heard tonight, and you have concerns, I would recommend that you hire an environmental consultant to work on your behalf, to go through these documents, to explain the regulations to you, the difference between hazardous, the difference between non-hazardous, and that way, because the first presentation that we heard involved, you know, and I agree, you know, you do not want hazardous waste, you do not want contaminated soil. There are places to put those. They're called, they're landfills, and they're lined, and we have them in, you know, we have them in West Virginia, we have them in Tennessee, we have them, you know, we ship soils from Massachusetts all over the place. You're not bringing, I agree, don't bring any hazardous waste, don't bring any contaminated soils into Hubbardston.
The adopted bylaw shouldn't be an issue.
Excuse me?
That the adopted bylaw shouldn't be an issue. If everything is beautiful, it's all great material, but why are we continuing to talk about this?
Well, the material that we're talking about under the simple soils plan, and the soils management plans that we're talking about are non-hazardous soils, and they meet what's called the S1 standards. And the S1 standards were put together by toxicologists, I'm not a toxicologist, and risk assessors, and this was done, I don't know, some 21,12 back in 1983, the MCP thing, or you can help me with this, I don't know when they developed the risk assessments, but they were determined by toxicologists through risk assessments on how to standardize these soils. And actually, so an S1 soil is the only soil that you can put in one of these gravel pits that's unlined. And we've done background studies on the soil that's there. Naturally occurring arsenic and metals are in soils naturally, and so those levels of there are called background.
We don't need to add anymore.
Well, if you don't want any soils to come in, that's a different story. I was just helping you.
That's what, that's what we're talking about tonight. We're not talking about the merits, and we're not debating any application, we're not debating any proposal. We're talking about the merits of having a bylaw that would prohibit this soil, so we don't have to worry about any of this. That's it.
But you said specifically contaminated soil and hazardous.
That's what this says. Everything on that list that we wanna prohibit is contaminated. Now, if somebody wants to bring in gravel, I guess that's okay.
But gravel, if you test gravel, it will have metals in it.
Okay, so let's get to the point here. Do you have a question?
I have a question. Assuming what you say is correct, these soils are good, and they're not that contaminated, you're basically asking the town of Hubbardston to trust the building owner, the landowner, and the site contractor in this LSP. But what happens in 40 years? If, oh, I'm sorry, someone made a mistake, like, I don't know, maybe a place like Flint, Michigan, they said, oh, that water's safe to drink, that water's safe to drink, and all of a sudden, it's not, okay? The owner of the property, he's an LLC, he has no liability. These LSPs, they may have some insurance companies, but I can guarantee those insurance companies are gonna be running the high of the hill. So I understand what you're saying, and if you could 100% guarantee that the soils were clean and not contaminated, but I'm on the Ware Watershed Advisory Committee, okay? The town of Hubbardston is all, the MDC or DCR, or Water Division owns 50% of this town, they own 10,000 acres. And I put it to Bill Pugh, who's the director of the Water Division, said, would you allow any of these soils on Ware Watershed property? He said, no, it's Boston's water supply. Why would we do that? So if they're that clean, then why can't Boston put it on their own land? They own enough of it, they own 10,615 acres here. Why don't they wanna do that? And then I asked him, would you allow it to be in the town of Hubbardston on land that you don't own? And he goes, look, DEP is a sister agency, and that guy who runs that is my boss. And he says, I'm not gonna question him. And you're asking us to trust you, well, not you personally, I'm asking DEP, these LSPs, the Mr. Brown here, who's proposing to bring this stuff in. I can't swallow that, I have problems with that.
Well, that's why I advised you to hire a consultant, is they can help you with this, and the soils that are proposed to come in are considered S1 soils.
But, just a moment, no, excuse me. All right, we appreciate your comments, but we're not talking about any soil that are proposed to be brought in. We're talking about the bylaw to prohibit these soils, so...
Okay, well, then I agree, you should not bring any hazardous material or any contaminated soil, I mean...
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments, any public questions?
I'd just like to explain the testing process that we go through, or the material goes through, because it's been very vague to this point. When they determine they've got a site where they wanna put a bill of lading, first thing they go in is test the site. They go in and do borings, they do test pits, they test the material at the site to see what kind of materials are there. So that's before the trucks even, before the construction crews show up, before anybody shows up. That gives them an idea of roughly what's on the site, where the materials are located, if there is contamination on the site. If they go through all this testing and find zero contamination on the site, then yeah, they sample one in every 63 loads, or one in every 64 loads, and it is random, it's not, they don't count off 63 trucks, okay, we're gonna sample you. It's not done that way. It is a random test. It's, and it's, it's an average of one of every 60, whatever the number was, it's not every 63rd truck gets tested. After they do the site borings and the site testing, when they determine where, what may be in what location, then they go in and they start their excavations. Well, the site is set out in blocks, so that this area may be completely clean, there's nothing else there. If it's a clean site, there's generally, there's not a lot of heavy contamination on the site. Usually, the site is fairly clean, clean, or heavily contaminated, or mildly contaminated. So these sites are individual. When they start excavating out the site, they've got a pretty good idea already what's there, so they know how much they gotta test as they're trucking the material out. If in the process of loading the material onto the trucks, they find that the test, that the testing shows something other than what they believed was there, that whole testing jumps dramatically up again. They start checking every other load, every load, every 500 yards, there's a whole bracket of, and I don't know the individual comes, but every, but the stuff is tested, and it's also, each truck that's loaded is given a bill of lading and a manifest that said, you have to go to this location, you can't go to any other location, this, they have to actually put on the bill of lading what contaminates, if there's contaminants in the soil, what percentage of contaminants are in the soil, and then when the bill of ladings have to be sent prior to the trucks coming, day before, two days before, to the receiving location, so the receiving location knows what they got coming in. If there's anything in the bill of ladings that's not supposed to come to them, they immediately contact the shipper and say, this stuff's not supposed to come to us. So, and then when the materials get to the site, the material's again tested on this end by a separate licensed LSP that's hired by the town, paid for by, by the, but the LSP is basically working for the town, it's not working for the contractor. They are under the employment of the town. So they're protecting the town's interest. They don't care about the contractor, they're working for the town. But, and then the material is tested, and then if the material, when the material comes in, when a site comes in, the first load from every job has to be put in a segregated pile, has to be completely tested for everything, and then the loads come in and they gotta be periodically tested. If anything comes on, on that first, that first load that was dumped, if anything unusual is in that load, everything that was dumped has to be removed back out. So there's a lot of testing that goes, and that's involved with the material, on the front end and the back end. So it's not just like they test one in every 67 trucks, and that's the way it goes. It doesn't work that way.
Pay the LSP. Pay the LSP.
We have to pay, the contractor has to pay the LSP through the town, but it's the town's LSP.
As long as, as long as we're on this, this subject here, perhaps you could be good enough to tell us the story you told us in January when you came to the planning board meeting about the soils that came out of Harvard, I believe it was, Harvard University...
Yes, and that was, that was one of the things that started off. Prior to this new institution of how to handle contaminated materials, or excavated materials, let's not call them contaminated, because 90% of what gets excavated is not contaminated. There is contaminated material, but the bulk of the material that gets excavated out of the city of Boston is not contaminated. But it's controlled, everything has to be controlled today. There's no more landfills. Landfills are a thing of the past, you're not gonna see any more landfills open enough. So what's that do? Because there's no more landfills, the state has to find places to put materials. Well, they don't, so they put a regulation in so that, you go back four or five years ago, anybody could've brought anything into Hubbardston. Can't do that anymore. Now, everything leaving the city has to be manifested. So now, anything leaving Boston, and this isn't gonna be a state law probably in another five years. The only reason they're not pushing them statewide right now, because they have to get enough receiving facilities up and running to accept the materials. So eventually, if you get material excavated out of, you're gonna put it in a school, you're gonna have it excavated in Hubbardston, you're gonna have to have an LSP there checking the material when it's being excavated, before it can be dumped anywhere. So right now, we got the city of Boston, but 10 years from now, it's gonna be the entire state. So what they're trying to do is they're trying to get old gravel pits and, and, I'm sorry, I forgot, I'll go back to your question. What had happened probably 10 years ago now, is that there was a large excavation project done in Harvard University, and the materials that were shipped out of the Harvard University project was being disposed of everywhere. Well, somebody that was disposing materials out of Harvard took materials from another site, and we don't know, I don't know where it was, but dumped it at the same site they were dumping Harvard's materials. And Harvard ended up getting sued for $300 million for letting contaminated materials, even though it come to find out it wasn't their materials, they ended up settled, they didn't get sued. But this is what happens, this is why this law was put into effect to control this, so that if there's a manifest coming off a job, a shipper cannot take materials from another job and bring it into a site unless he has a manifest. Those manifests are not, we don't get the manifests from the shipper, we get them from the job, from the LSP that's working at the job site, ships the manifests over. So that way, there can't be any cross-contamination of material coming from different projects to a dump site where they're not supposed to be going. That was the thing that probably stirred this, this in the beginning, when Harvard, because Harvard University actually did the first study, it's called the Harvard Study. So that's what happened. So now what they're gonna do is, DEP is trying to open up enough sites, receiving sites, but all materials, not just, all over the state. They don't want just materials, receiving sites for the city of Boston, they want, eventually it'll be receiving sites for everything. RS1 material will go here, RS2 material will go here, RS3 material will go there. RS1 material, the type of material that we're talking about, can be used in schools, can be used in residential subdivisions, can be used in playgrounds. This is all but classified as DEP, that these are usable uses for this type of material after the site is filled. These are the uses. So RS1 material is not a contaminated material. But anyhow, I'll get back, I just don't want you to think that this material isn't tested many, 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 many times before it's put in the ground. It's tested a lot.
I have a question about the bylaw. How is the bylaw going to be implemented, and what are the consequences of its violation?
The bylaw would be part of the general bylaws of the town of Hubbardston, and as such, it would be regulated by the, I believe it's the state mandated either civil or criminal penalties, which I believe are about $300 a day for each violation.
And, and in terms of its implementation, I would expect that this would be used by the planning board then, in conjunction with its permitting authority? Is that how it gets implemented?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be used by the planning board, because it would be prohibited, so it would just be, you know, not allowed in town.
It would be, it would be a condition of every permit?
Correct.
Right, okay.
There'd be no permits.
There'd be no permits, that's true.
Well, if, if the permitting had to do, I'll try to make something up, if there was, if there was some, some activity involving some movement of earth, this would be a condition of the permit, right?
No.
No? Okay.
No, the gravel removal bylaw would be what would control your movement of soils, but this would be totally prohibited to come into town.
And we do have a gravel removal bylaw in place.
Okay, okay.
It's pretty comprehensive.
Is it safe to say that any material coming into town, I build in a house in town, and I need 50,000 cubic yards of fill to bring out, or ground, has to be tested? And if it meets any of the criteria, I can't build a house with that material?
I believe it only says, as long as it's not one of those...
Yeah, as long as the material's not listed in those policies.
Someone has to test every load of the material coming from.
No, the bylaw's listed everything.
Every load. If I go out of, if I go out of Garzer and buy a bag of Scott's soil, bring it into town, under the bylaw, because Scott's soil has nitrates, it has nickel, it has chromium, under that, I've just violated the law.
I think that's a broad interpretation, what we're gonna do here, and that's not...
You're setting the broadening of any soil.
I didn't see Scott's fertilizer in our policies.
Go ahead.
Like, I want clarification on, you know, the planning board is in charge of all the zoning bylaws.
Correct.
And the gravel removal, that's a zoning bylaw?
No, it's a general bylaw.
Is that a general bylaw? Okay. So this now would be a general bylaw, which then would be under the auspices of the Select Board, not the Planning Board, is that correct?
If it's not included in the gravel removal bylaw, then it would be under the auspices, the enforcement would be through billing inspectors.
Okay.
Which is under, which is under the Select Board responsibility.
Well, he is an independent...
So this would not be, this, it would not be in control of the Planning Board?
It's not playing...
I guess that's my...
That's correct, right.
Right.
Was that, was that done specifically because this ties in with the gravel removal bylaw?
No, it just, it more logically fits within our bylaws, there are a couple other communities that have done the same thing that we did, and they did them as general bylaws.
It's a standalone article, it's not part of the gravel removal.
Right, right.
Ron?
Yeah. My question to Mark is, you had in here the phrasing, including but not limited to, what other materials besides what you have specified for the DEP policies that are outside of those policies that you're trying to win?
None. As far as sand, gravel, et cetera, that's not the intent of this bylaw. And now, and I don't believe that type of material is listed in any of those policies.
But it does say but not...
But it does say hazardous material. It does say but not limited to, however, it does specifically say hazardous material. And I don't think anyone's ever defined Scott's fertilizer, or gravel, or anything like that as hazardous material. Again, this is only for hazardous material. We're not looking to put anybody, prevent anybody from doing something system, or putting a lot on their property. Again, we don't need the rest, in my opinion. Again, if the town decides they wanna play with this type of activity, more political. There's no benefit for towns doing this. We don't need the trucks, we don't need the rest, we don't need to be debating this stuff. By passing this bylaw, it takes it off the table.
All right, I'm gonna leave it this for one more comment. Anybody here has not said anything would like to say, because I'd like to get to the next hearing. We're running about a half an hour over on this one, and it's been a good discussion, but we still have to move on.
I just wanted a clarification, because hazardous materials and contaminated waste, they have their defined materials, and non-hazardous materials is defined materials. So your bylaw is just to keep out hazardous waste?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And contaminated soils.
Right.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Let's wrap this up. Thank you very much, folks, it's been...
This is the law.
It's been a good hearing.
Yeah.
I want to take a motion to close the hearing on the article to prohibit the importation of material into the town of Hubbardston. Second? All in favor? Hearing number two. So I'll read the public hearing statement. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Hubbardston Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 31st, 2016, at 7:45 PM in the senior center of the Slade Building, 7th Main Street, Hubbardston, via public comment on a proposed amendment to Hubbardston zoning bylaws by adding Chapter 21, Regulation of Soils. The proposed articles submitted by Citizen Initiative petition would give the town flexibility in determining when or...
in determining when or if a proposed earth filling project can be approved and conditioned to protect the interests specified in the town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws. amended 6215 at Article 1. Again, this article was published two times in the Guardian News, this hearing article, and also posted in Town Clerk's Office and two other prominent places in town. We'll begin with Mary Ann DePinto, who was the author of the Citizens Initiative petition. I wanna make it clear that although she's a member of the planning board, this was not a planning board initiative, this was done on her own, so she'll recuse herself from the planning board, make a presentation, and then we'll begin to read what we have to say. There's a few copies of it up here.
Well, that's, yeah, there are some copies. Some, you made some comments on--
No, not those.
Not those.
Pete, let me make one other qualification. This is set up in the warrant as Article 32. Mary Ann has told me that what was printed in your warrant, that you perhaps already received in the mail, was actually her draft article. That this final article that she prepared was not printed. So therefore, on the town meeting floor, this particular article that we see in the warrant will have to be amended. It's going to be a very lengthy situation and a very, you know, it was an error, it just got done, it was one of these, I think, the things that felt really cracks during our administration transition, and I don't believe anybody's at fault. However, as Mary Ann has said, there are some qualifying situations, qualifying situations in this article as it's printed that she would like to see changed. So, Mary Ann, why don't you go ahead and give a synopsis of what you'd like to have in Article 32?
The town has an earth removal bylaw, and in our discussion, so the planning board, we don't really have an earth filling bylaw. There is, when people get permits for reconstruction of various types, they're allowed to bring fill in as necessary as part of that construction permit. But in the process of looking at a broader scope where there are projects where there's tremendous amounts of fill being brought in, and I don't wanna cast any kind of suspicions on whomever, for example, there's a lot of fill going in on Country Hand. I'm not saying it's bad fill, but we don't know what it is. It looks pretty clean from driving by. But, for example, there's truckload after truckload after truckload, and it's a situation where broadly, maybe we could get a handle on this and see what is coming into town in larger quantities. And the kind of quantities I'm talking about would be, anything under 500 cubic yards, and if you wanna visualize that, it's 20 truckloads, 10-wheel dump trucks, approximately. Anything less than that is 20 truckloads. And that would be a simple permit from 20 truckloads up to 80, up to 2,000 yards. Anything over 2,000 yards would be the larger permit requirements. What I did was, in the process of our discussions on the planning board, I went and checked to see what some of the other towns were doing, and I took an earth filling bylaw from another town and adapted it to fit Hubbardston's circumstances. My initial draft, I wanted to have go before the town council, to Anita, to see if my approach was correct, I didn't understand the town's structure, and I wanted to make sure that it fit. In this case, I was assigning the small permits to the building inspector initially, and after some discussion, easily here, a couple hours a week, a few hours, it didn't make sense. And yes, there should be two permits, simplified and a more extensive permit, but both should be under the auspices of the planning board. What this proposed bylaw would do would regulate the earth filling and require the soil that's being brought into town to be checked, from the site it's leaving and the site that it's coming to. And if there are other permits involved, there's a permit being, that's been given up by the Board of Health or Conservation Commission, there could be some circumstances where it's simultaneous permitting occurring. The other boards would get copies of this earth filling proposal. I don't know if you have your warrants with you, if there are any specific questions. Let's see, if I can-- to save some time. The town planning board would be the permitting authority for both permits. In the draft, when I dictated into the computer the word "filling," it wrote it as "feeling." So I started to see the word "feeling," it should say "filling." I'd always soil-- feelings.
We don't care about the feelings.
Yeah. So the application would be submitted to the planning board, three copies, also at the same time to the DPW director, Conservation Commission, and Board of Health. Each of them would have an opportunity to comment on the project within 20 days. Performance bonds could also be required for the project. The planning board recalled the hearing, initially, it said within 30 days, would like to amend that to 45 days, based on the fact we only have one meeting a month, and it may be challenging. Although required posting, notification of the butters, you should also be obtaining other permits simultaneously with that. And approval deadlines, once the hearing is closed, there's a 60-day, it's not 45-days, 60-day timeframe to write the permit with conditions. So a large filling project, over 2,000 cubic yards, would require a soil management plan. The soil management plan should be assigned by a licensed scientific professional and state that the subject plan meets the requirements of the Hubbardston's Earth Filling Bylaw and any other applicable federal, state laws regulating or pertaining to the transport of earth or other materials for fill. The soil management plan must contain sufficient details to document the requirements of the earth filling bylaw that will be met. Requiring builds of lading, the forms specified by the planning board, and procedures approved by the planning board. The soil management plan shall include the following at a minimum: complete descriptions of pre-fill environmental conditions and findings and sample locations; procedures for verification of the fill material, its origin and acceptance; record-keeping practices; site security; fill operation inspection and site control; the transport routes, times of day, times of operations, all pre-regulated by the planning board, depending upon the specific site they're talking about, residential street involved, and so on. Locations of equipment, parking the equipment, storage of equipment, how long the fill activity is going to extend, over what time period, as well as its time of day. Qualifications of the personnel responsible for adhering to the soil management plan and the bylaw. Monitoring for erosion control, dust, stormwater controls, requiring inspection and maintenance of those, effects of the filling on groundwater recharge. Quality assurance and quality control procedures, emergency response and notification procedures, including telephone numbers and contact individuals and firms, for example, if there was a piece of equipment that was operating and a hydraulic hose caught in something and there was a discharge, and those kinds of things, spill kit on site. The total proposed earth material fill volume, the daily personnel procedures and operation management procedures, including types, numbers, locations, and hours of operation of any processing equipment on site. Environmental monitoring plan to maintain protection of human health, public safety, welfare, and the environment during and following the fill operations. And then, what's the cover material, ref vegetation, erosion pollution control plan, and monitoring and maintenance, making sure the site, once any filling has occurred, that it's stabilized And a site plan, if there's more than 2,000 cubic yards of fill, a registered land surveyor or engineer shall prepare the site plan. And the site plan shall depict the following information: existing conditions, including the grades, any man-made features, elevations, property boundaries, dimensions, owners of the land are entitled to notice under this bylaw, what are the access points, where are the water bodies, watercourses, wetlands, and any environmental sampling locations; process diagrams indicating fill sequence, transport routes, and security measures; drainage, water flow, sedimentation control before and after the proposed fill, stormwater and erosion control, groundwater recharge structures and features to be utilized during fill operations; final grade plans depicting the proposed fill elevation, slopes, permanent stormwater and erosion control, and groundwater recharge structures and features; final methods of stabilization of the fill, the proposed cover material and cover vegetation. And there's specifications for the scale, the plans and the maps, so that they're not at some scale that's hard to read. Elevation contours are at most two-foot contours, and need to extend beyond, 100 feet beyond the fill area. Permitting fill materials, all fill materials shall include only clean sand, gravel, clay, stone, ore, rock, or other subsurface products free from solid waste with an aggregate size of six inches or less, and have no solid waste, refuse, junk, industrial waste, or volatile, explosive, or flammable materials. The fill materials shall have no concentration of oil or hazardous material, toxic substance or infectious biological material greater than federal, state, or local reportable or action criteria, or materially greater than pre-fill conditions prevailing in the area to be filled. The fill materials shall also be free from organic materials such as trees, stumps, garbage, building materials, and construction and demolition debris, and shall contain 15% or less total organic carbon by lab analysis. Site preparation, the area shall be cleared of stockpiled or otherwise disposed of organic and inorganic materials such as fallen trees and brush, stumps, rubbish, junk, building materials, any other accumulated debris. So if there's stuff on the site already, it's gotta be removed. Topsoil shall be removed from the area to be filled prior to filling. The area to be filled corresponds to the horizontal limits of the fill activity as represented on a plan view draw. Fencing and gates, temporary fencing, where deemed appropriate by the permit granting authority for the protection of the general public during fill operations, shall be at least six feet high with suitable gates to exclude unauthorized persons from the site. Groundwater recharge and drainage, provision shall be made for promoting groundwater recharge, for preventing increased runoff from the site, and for safe drainage of water, for preventing excessive water accumulation, and for preventing wind or water erosion from carrying material onto adjoining properties. Cleaning of vehicles, roads, and streets, and covering of roads. Provision shall be made for the cleaning of all vehicles before they leave the site, and for daily cleaning of all public roadways in the vicinity of the site that have been affected by vehicles engaged in the filling activity, such as tracking beds and that kind of things, you know, carrying soil onto the roads. Covering the trucks as well. Dust control, for watering or whatever means. Buffer strips, the permit granting authority may require a 20-foot buffer strip that shall be maintained at all boundaries and not disturbed. Screening of processing equipment, visibility, sound, and airborne particulates from processing equipment shall be screened from adjacent premises through the design and location of such equipment, and through the use of natural vegetation planting, overburned piles and surge piles of screening. Final cover, all fillings shall require coverage with a minimum of four inches of organic topsoil, and shall be seated and mulched to stabilize the fill material. Where filling is incidental to facilitate parking of vehicles, the fill material shall be covered by a suitable binding material to prevent airborne dust and erosion. Finished elevations and grading, the permit granting authority may specify finished grades, elevations, and contour intervals which filling will conform to. The final fill material grades shall conform in contour, slope, and elevation to the natural topography of the surrounding area or pre-existing contours as evidenced by historical maps or photographs. Final grading shall incorporate stabilization members and measures, and slopes of no more than 15% to prevent erosion, structural failure of fill materials, pounding of water, or excessive stormwater drainage onto abutting properties. The permit granting authority may set reasonable conditions in addition to the above, including but not limited to the duration of the permit, hours of day during which the fill may take place, maximum load sizes, truck routes to be used to access the site, and grasses, shrubs, and trees to be planted. No permit shall be issued under the provisions of this bylaw to extend for a term of more than two years. At the end of the two years, come back before the planning board potentially get an extension to that. Prior to filling in at any time during a permitted filling activity, inspection of the premises may be made by the permit granting authority, arts agents, and, by the building inspector as our code enforcement officer, on reasonable advance notice to determine whether or not provisions of the town bylaw and any permit are being complied with. If the permit granting authority determines that the provisions of the bylaw or of any permit are being violated, the permit granting authority may issue a temporary cease and desist, which may remain in effect until terminated in writing that the permit granting authority determines the conditions of any large or small project filling or not being complied with. The permit granting authority may revoke the permit, after which the operation shall be discontinued and the area restored in accordance with the orders of the permit granting There are inspections, certifications, reports, and tests on a weekly basis, they need to be submitted, not have to be at all, but-- and the planning board will create the actual applications for the permits and set the fees as well. The permit required to commence filling operation, no fill operations are to commence until a letter indicating the granting of a permit if required, receipt and acceptance of the soil management plan and the site plan that has been issued to the applicant by the permit granting authority. Builds of lading and LSP letters, each permit holder shall file a bill of lading with the planning board for each load of fill placed within the town. Each bill of lading document shall be accompanied by a signed and dated letter from the LSP which specifies the point of origin of the material and the receiving location of the material. That the material is not otherwise prohibited from use as fill material in accordance with this bylaw or other applicable federal, state laws, regulations, standards, or guidelines. And if the LSP has compared analytical results of testing of the fill materials to the existing pre-fill conditions at the fill location and determined that the concentration of the substances in the materials intended for use as fill are not significantly greater than existing pre-fill conditions for that location, and that the fill material complies with the requirements of 21.6A of this bylaw. Weekly documentation requirements, the fifth business day following a week of active operation, they should be submitted to the town. Enforcement action, the building inspector is designated as the officer in charge of the enforcement of the bylaw. The planning board is actually in charge of enforcing it, but the building inspector would act as the code officer. The planning board, upon written complaint of any town citizen or property owner, or upon such officer's own initiative, shall institute any appropriate action or proceedings in the name of the town to prevent, correct, restrain, or evade violation of the bylaw. In the case where the planning board is requesting in writing to enforce this bylaw against any person allegedly in violation of the same, and the planning board declines to act, the officer shall notify in writing the party requesting such enforcement of any action or refusal to act and the reasons for. Fine $300 a day for each offense. This bylaw should not be construed to authorize the use of any land or structure for any purpose that's prohibited by any other provision of-- purpose that's prohibited by any other provision of the last three days, general laws, or any other bylaw or regulation of the town, or shall compliance with any such provision authorize the use of any land in any manner inconsistent with this bylaw except as required by the general laws. Standard. Transitional rules, if somebody's already doing some earth filling, they have 30 days to file, come into compliance with the earth filling bylaw. That's it.
Good job.
Thanks.
Hold on just a second, please. Just a second, let me just make two comments so that everybody can realize that what this bylaw will do is become an article under the zoning bylaws of the town. And what Marian is trying to do with the revisions by making it consistent with the planning board responsibilities is what we have under the general bylaws of the earth removal permit already in existence, so that the planning board already has jurisdiction over the earth removal bylaw under the general bylaws. There are no provisions in the zoning bylaws at the present time for any filling or earth removal, so therefore she is making the planning board the responsible party, which is consistent under the general bylaws. In addition, no, I guess that's all I had to say about that. Okay, so, does anybody have a question on the board for Marian?
Does this, is there in here, I didn't see anything, how much land can be opened at any one time? Like in the earth removal bylaws, it's only a four acres or something. Is that in here or no? Like they can't be filling, I mean, I think Graves has a 50-acre pit up there, could he just start from one end and just have 50 acres open?
That would be the subject of the permit, the planning board says that they have to submit a site plan and say, this is our order of operation, we're going to be doing the following things, and then you could regulate that process. You could set a standard saying you will only open, you'll only have two acres of land disturbed at a time. You can, you said that as permit condition.
Okay, the other question is, I mean, all these things in here for the planning board, it's a lot of work.
I don't know how many of these would come into...
But, I'm just saying, I know, but who's going to do the work? Who's going to pay for that? I mean, the town of Hupperton is going to have to pay, we're going to, according to what you're saying, everything you said the planning board was going to have to, Janet really works with 60 hours a week, so I don't think she has too much time.
Also, the permit fees that the person would be paying would allow the planning board to hire a consultant.
So we have one pit comes in, so we have to hire someone.
I'm not even talking about pits, I'm talking about...
Or whatever.
Cut your hands or whatever.
Whatever, one thing, so, but we'd have to have someone on staff trained to do this. We have to hire someone, have someone on staff to do this prior to anyone ever doing it, correct?
Just, I want to interrupt the questions by you people, just, because that was one of my concerns as well, was that a lot of times when you have a situation like that, it's a responsibility of the person bringing in the material to let the town hire the consultant and the one who's, I know when we look at cell towers and that at one time, you know, part of the permitting process was that you, the town would have the right to hire their own independent consultant that would oversee the operation, and that would be billed back to, you know, you'd take a deposit from the perspective of the person bringing in the material, and that happened to me once when I was in Templeton, you know, and then you just, you know, when those funds are depleted for that consultant, then they would have to provide more funds, but they'd be responsible, so, you know, because that is so much work. And in my tenure in town, I've seen times when the planning board only had three people versus five people, and, you know, the strength and weaknesses of any board can go up and down, so it would be, it would be a huge responsibility that we'd have to be...
You definitely have peer review of the work that's coming in, that site plan.
But, does it say that in here?
No, it's not written there, but it's allowed. I'm not sure where the law is, I know conservation, for example, conservation commission is saying that.
Yeah, we do have the option of having the applicant of whatever project goes on paying for consultants, peer reviews, and attorneys and everything else, so we've done that in the past, we don't have to do it again.
How were they, how was that done for a solar project?
The solar company comes in, they tell us what they are doing, our planning board engineer gives them an estimate of the cost of reviewing all their projects, they give us the money for that review, and we pay the engineer as he submits his build.
I've watched several solar projects go through, and they're pretty simple. You know, put an auger in the ground, they mount the post, and up comes a light collecting panel, a whole bunch of them in, all the same, got to be on pretty stable land, level land. And frankly, I thought some of them went pretty well, and some of them were nightmares. They were not easy to execute. Planning board put a lot of time, and when I read this, or when I listen to Marian's study, everywhere along here, there is discretion exercised. Well, you can do it this way, or you can do it that way, planning board can decide. And when you have discretion, you have to be fair to everybody. Without strict standards, if this is the way it's going to be, you're getting yourself in a lot of trouble. I go back to my question, if you give it to Jimmy, you got to give it to Johnny, on pretty much the same terms. You can't, you can't be making up terms as you go along. I think this is a very difficult bylaw to minister and execute so that things come out effectively and protects the town. You have to remember, there's a person on the other side of the table who doesn't want to do it this way, wants to do it in a more relaxed fashion. And that tug of war is hard when things are not well defined. Highlight prohibition.
Well, we're going to talk to the board first. Anybody else on the board that have a question for Marian? Okay, okay, let's open it up.
I'm curious, which towns did you borrow this from?
This is predominantly Salisbury, North Georgia, tourist town.
What's the single biggest change you made to theirs? Does the planning board...
They had a full-time building inspector, and the planning board was only for the large permits.
Okay.
Did they adopt it?
Yes. The treaty general accepted it.
You know, the history of the gravel bylaw that we have, as I mentioned earlier, which has the planning board as not only the administering and enforcement agent, was pretty much a maturation of the previous bylaws that basically didn't work. And they didn't work because of the problematic situations that developed from enforcement. Now, as Marian said, you know, our building inspector works part-time, he's busier than any time before, and it's, you know, it's nothing that he's interested in doing either, so it's nothing that's a slight to Larry, he does a wonderful job with the work he does. This is a huge problem, or his schedule, so therefore, the planning board took on the gravel removal bylaw, and it's worked effectively. We're getting to the point now where we're feeling more comfortable with it, and that's what Marian is doing with this, is trying to mesh it so it's the same type of operation as the gravel removal bylaws. Any other questions, Norm?
Yeah, every permit that I've ever gotten in town, we've always been responsible, the person requesting the permit has always been responsible for the cost of, associated with the permit. Routine engineering, engineer inspections on a regular basis, we always had to pay for those. So it's, you know, the permity that is applying for the permit knows these costs are going to be expected going in upfront, so it's not going to be anything that's going to be, you know, out of the ordinary. Nobody's going to be fighting over the cost of doing, you know, paying for the inspections, or paying for the engineering, paying for the reviews, and paying for that, those kind of items. We do it all the time.
My comment to that would be, unless it's in writing, why should I do it? You know, in the earth removal bylaw, it's detailed as to what everyone's expected to do, and what everyone's expected to pay. I need to be disparate on this, but it should be spelled out, black and white.
According to Marian's, it's the fees to be set by the planning board. She's leaving that discretion to the planning board.
Well, it starts the process, not so much the fee. Obviously, the fees change with the project and sculpt services, but as far as ETLs and what everyone, or any applicants require, they expect to do.
Well, they have to pay for all forms, test, business inspections, monitoring certifications, reports, and tests, and that they are conducted by persons selected by and responsible to the permit granting authority, so it's in there.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Jeff Lagrow, City of Gardner Conservation. Hupperton has several water supply protection areas and outstanding resource waters here in town. You know, water's obviously an important resource, these areas are designated and protected for a reason. You know, as far as resources go, water is probably the most important biologically and physically, so is there any, anything in there for, to provide protections for water supply protection areas or outstanding resource water areas, or any sensitive biological areas?
Yeah, that's all part of that site plan process, and looking at, when you look at a site, you look at all the criteria, you know, all of the parameters of that site, and permit or deny a project based on those parameters, and this is based on providing those things, those public interests, that are cited in the Hupperton zoning bylaws. Noise, water, it's all in there, protecting all of those resources.
Again, my comment would be, it should be spelled out. You know, if an area that's a potential resource area needs to be protected, or this type of activity isn't wanted, then that should be spelled out in the bylaw as clear.
Or is some type of environmental consulting required when you're within one of those areas, or within a certain number of feet of one of those areas?
I just think it should be spelled out, you know, what people are expected to do, because if it's not spelled out, why would you want to do it? And how can you say no?
Environmental monitoring plan to maintain the protection of human health, public safety, welfare, and the environment during and following the fill operations. So somebody comes over the plan, and you know, this is, it's in a gravel, feeds gardeners' wells, that, that would be part of the person's plan. If it's not in there, you'd be requested, you know, go back to the drawing board and get us the information.
Again, it's not spelled out required.
It is.
It is, it's in there.
It is, it's in there.
It doesn't appear to...
If you start getting very specific and say, you've got to have this, this, and this, then you leave out things by saying that public health, human health, public safety, welfare, and the environment, all of those things, includes drinking water, includes clean air, and we can require it.
It's also, it should be in the town, but it's also a state requirement to do public and private water supply wells to determine groundwater flow, groundwater discharge, zone twos. It's all part of the hypergeologic study that has to go along with any of these projects. It's required by the state. And a groundwater monitoring program, typically they're quarterly. I mean, we're not going into that detail, but that's what she said, the detail, the details...
But these are all the operations, they're just, the specific way you might be referring to. I'm talking about other sites in town, very large, because where, let's say there's a farm very similar to one in Rutland that wants to come in and level it, and say, okay, we're going to do agriculture here, but boy, my land goes like this, and I want to fill, I want to bring in, you know, 400,000 yards of fill material, well, the town wouldn't have an opportunity to look at it. Land and agricultural use, it's exempt in a lot of ways, but this would now bring the that fill under the purview of the planning board.
Does this, does this give the town opportunity to say, no, we don't want that?
Yes. You have to meet all the requirements. If it does not protect those interests in the town, if you feel that it doesn't protect those interests, it can be denied.
Is that challengeable?
Anything's challengeable, anything's.
Any other questions? Jassy?
Yeah, it's my understanding that right now, bringing in large quantities of fill is not allowed because it's not in the bylaws, so by having this bylaw, we would now be allowing...
There is large quantities of fill being brought into town now.
For construction, for the purpose of construction.
Right, exactly, but we're not monitoring any of that.
Right.
That's the challenge.
This is kind of a blanket bylaw that is allowing people to bring in fill for purposes other than construction.
It's regulating people that are bringing fill into town.
But right now, people, it's prohibited, as I understand...
No, it's not.
Excuse me? Let Jassy finish, please.
It's my understanding that it's prohibited right now to bring in fill for the purpose of just importing fill.
No, it's not. You can bring fill.
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
So therefore, it's prohibited.
So therefore, it's prohibited.
Correct.
Exactly.
No, no, you can bring in fill. I could bring, I could start filling my back land to create an agricultural field right now.
Technically under the current, honestly, technically under the current zoning bylaws, nobody's supposed to be bringing in fill for anything. Bringing in fill in the town of Hupperton is prohibited.
If it's not in the zoning bylaws, then it's prohibited, I think that's...
Right, so I think it is.
I think it's in the zoning bylaws.
Agriculture, it says you can have agriculture, and I think I could bring in fill for my agricultural use, so we are allowed to do agriculture.
No, you cannot unduly regulate agriculture, but you can regulate agriculture, and it has to be...
But you don't have any kind of filling bylaw to do that.
Well, that's right, we don't have any type of fill bylaw to let it in, and even if it was an agricultural situation, it could be denied because of that.
So we have a challenge when the center school needs a new septic system, and needs to bring in thousands of yards of fill material, they can't.
But that's...
It's not allowed.
But that's for purposes of construction.
And they have to get a permit for that.
You know, you can build.
It doesn't say that in the bylaws, though.
But it doesn't say that.
That's what the bylaws say.
You also can't use material you described here, or septic system. They're governed by a whole other set of laws.
Center school wants to level that back land that drops off because kids keep falling down the slope, but let's say...
When we fill the rec field.
But what about near the rec field, too?
Well, what's happened in the past and what may happen in the future is what this is going to decide. Norm, anything else?
To Jassy's point, there is a bylaw, 5.4 reads, private fountain, commercial landfills, dumping, abandoning, disposal of vehicles, equipment, appliances, demolition material, or any other waste material is prohibited in all of this.
Okay.
That's the current law, and that's being challenged, and that's why the prohibition law is going to get piled on top of that. What'd you say, double dot the i's and double cross the d's? I had never heard that before. That's what it's about.
Anybody else?
Ed? This is one comment from my history of being in this town for a number of years, is that we do a poor job of enforcement, and that's in all categories. And, you know, we basically run this town with part-time people other than the town administrator and so on, the police, and fire, and that. But as far as enforcement of zoning and that, it's always been a weakness of ours. You know, we have a part-time building inspector, and, I mean, we put in a sign bylaw, and it was very specific, and, you know, the sign bylaw violations all over the town, because basically nothing in this town gets enforced unless somebody complains about it. That's the only time it gets enforced. You can put up 16 different signs that are illegal, and until somebody comes and says, what are those signs doing there, there's no enforcement. So we really don't have in this town a lot of teeth that take care of our zoning bylaws and our general bylaws, and I'm not sure that's going to change in the future, so my concern would be, you know, if we can't enforce what we're doing now, how much more can we enforce?
This has...
I know that has some teeth to it.
Better mechanism in here, because on a weekly basis, information needs to be submitted to the planning board. If that doesn't happen, cease and desist... If that doesn't happen, cease and desist immediately. They have to.
Information has to be digested. You can't just say, submit it. It's just going to pile up on the table and down there.
With the, with the person that's been hired by the town to review it.
Further to Ed's point, in this town right now, we have lots of gravel pits, okay? All of them had permits at one time. All the permits have expired except for Jeff Ackler. No one else has come and done what they were supposed to do. For 12 years, we have pits up there that people are supposed to reclaim them and they haven't reclaimed. The planning board is working on that now, but it's going to take time. It's, it's points like, you know, 12 years later, we're just finally getting.
One thing that this, this, this law does is it is, is it is an opportunity for the planning board to generate a large amount of revenue for the town too. I could never understand in the past why the gravel, well, the gravel bylaw never required gravel hauls to the town.
Tipping fee.
Tipping fee.
There have been tipping fees.
I mean, we've proposed a tipping fee to the town if we, if we. Well, we can explain that because state law does not allow the towns to collect fees in excess of what the costs are associated with the permitting. So to say we can win there and charge, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's true.
To say we can win there and charge all those fees, it may be a negotiated situation that comes through a permit. However, it's something we just can't do.
I never knew that. The action does.
They charge everyone.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I, I find it hard to believe that, as Mary Ann said earlier, a permit can be denied. What a permit, what will happen is if you pass a regulation, you will allow everything. You'll regulate it, but it will all be allowed. The various conditions here will always be massaged and met in some way. To regulate is to allow. And I think that's a golden rule, especially when, when criteria are not quantifiable. For instance, soil management plan has to have the effects of filling on groundwater One guy scores a 10, the other guy scores an eight, the other guy scores a three. What's the criteria for accepting or rejecting? No criteria. And you can't regulate arbitrarily. You have to have criteria. Otherwise, everything will result in a lawsuit. You gave it to Jimmy, but you did not given it to Johnny. Johnny complains. What's wrong with the three recharge? You didn't say it had to be greater than four. Yeah, I've got a three. Give me the permit. So that's the kind of mess you get into. It's arbitrary, it's, I guess the legal terms are arbitrary and cretious or something. Where you're making it up, that you go along, you're not consistent permit to permit. And it's very, very difficult, five amateurs to administer a six-page law.
Mary Ann?
No, sure. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I've issued permits for 30 years under the State Weapons Protection Act. I've denied some. I've denied many. They're deniable. If, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria that's in here, they're deniable. People can appeal them, they do. They come back, maybe change the project, fix things, whatever, that may happen too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just on the, on the tipping fee, there, there's tipping fees involved in all of the projects, RS1 and RS2. Our tipping fee is 10 times the amount of the Rutland project, for example. We're offering a dollar per yard. I think that's been.
Who are you offering that to?
To, to the town of Hubbardston.
Have you done that already?
We have offered that, verbally to the town of Hubbardston, you know that.
No, no, I want it on the record because we've been told that we have no official proposal. We have no official proposal.
It's verbal, it's verbal. These are the kind of agreements that we want to make to the town.
This is just a.
So, yeah. If this is something that goes through, if the town's interested in it, one yard per, per, per dollar per yard, that's, that was the agreement. We're not going to really, you know, like that.
Well, it's just a bone.
I've said that to you many times. It's not a bone, it's to, to take over, to sustain the town. We understand that we'd be putting services in place. You'd be hiring people, you'd be doing certain things. We've already discussed this, but it's good that it's gotten on the record because I don't think, because you certainly can charge tipping fees. You can, you negotiate.
Tom?
Two points. The Wetlands Protection Act is, I think, over 30 years old. It's a mature, well-developed law with cases, case law behind it, proven words, proven criteria. Introducing a brand-new, just recently hot off the press, no case law behind it, no cri, no strong criteria is a bundle of trouble. Second thing is, the town of Rutland did not get one penny out of their project.
That's new as to me. This is the most, this is the most expensive bylaw I've ever seen. I've never seen a bylaw this expensive before.
You go through every bylaw in this town and there's nothing this expensive.
Any other comments? All right, hold, hold on.
I will.
Ed?
Well, I've been on both sides, the board side and also the permitting side. And what Tom says is, is very true. You know, once, once you have a bylaw that allows, then it just becomes a question of how you fit into that allowance. Once you have a bylaw that says you allow it, you must issue a permit if they comply with all of the rules and regulations. So, you know, if you say you're going to allow it, then it just becomes a legal battle a lot of times as to whether, whether they provided the correct information and it was reviewed and is that.
I'm going to head out. I just wanted to thank everybody on the board for all your attention to this matter. It's obviously an important thing and it seems like you guys are putting a lot of thought into, into it here and, and the public as well for being involved and putting a lot of thought into it. Obviously, as the conservation agent for the City of Gardner, I'm here because of public interest, downstream interests in Gardner and concerns that, you know, I'm charged with protecting public water resources in Gardner. 20,000 people's water supply protection area falls within a zone where a potential project has been proposed that has to do with soil and soil receivership. So I just want to thank all of you for the attention you're giving to the matter. And I was here to get that information, you know, on those concerns that, that Gardner has for their public interest. So I'd just like to say, keep in mind for the board and for the public, obviously Hubbardston has their own public interest to keep in mind, but there are also interests, downstream interests, neighboring towns. And whenever it comes to the environment and in particular water and air, these things are not only susceptible to the site location where these projects happen, but also to the entire watershed system and any, you know, air, as air and water travels. So keep in mind and thank you guys for all of your due diligence and effort with putting a lot of thought and attention into this matter.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. So how are we doing? We about done? Anybody else got a comment, question, concern? Thank you very much. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on add up of 32. Two seconds. All in favor? Public hearing is now closed. If you would like to stay, we're going to reconvene the place. So we have to write a report that now goes to town meeting next week. And basically, it's a summation of the hearings. Two of them are going to be pretty easy. In fact, one, we don't even have to do. I was informed the other day that the water selectmen are holding a hearing on the charter override tomorrow evening and that we, in fact, should not have held a hearing that we had. However, we did hold it and there was no harm, no foul, not a big deal. So I don't feel compelled to write a report on that if it wasn't our obligation. That was a situation that Anita sent us the, the mandate to hold it. Turns out, the water selectmen should be holding it. Not a big deal. Rated development bylaw was the second hearing that we had, which of course, nobody showed up to. So therefore.
You don't report on that either? You just list it?
Well, unfortunately, I don't want to just list it because I consider that one of the most important bylaws that we have. And I hope everybody else can appreciate and be happy to come over if you need any more details on it. But the rated development bylaw basically keeps the town as the agent that's going to regulate growth through the planning board. And I, I would not like to see the town of Hubbardston be turned over to developers again so that it can be just developed willy-nilly like it has been in the past. It's been a situation that has controlled not only the number of homes that can be built per year, but also the method of subdivision control, a method of subdivision control and how many develop and how many homes a developer may build per year.
Yeah, a lot of towns have similar.
I'm sorry?
There are a lot of towns with similar.
Yeah. I think it's extremely.
System keeps up and a police and fire and so on, infrastructure.
If we, we had the opportunity to have two or three subdivisions come in, a four or five subdivisions like Rutland had, where they all get built out at the same time, we would just be inundated. Two things would happen. The ability of the town to service the situations would be taxed to the maximum. There would be more children in the schools, therefore we'd have more problems with the school and funding for the school. And it would also take a tool away from the planning board that allows us to offer developers options under the subdivision control laws and under the zoning bylaws. Basically, how we received, or how the developers decided they wanted to do the senior residential developments because we had that on the books, we told them the restrictions under the rated development, but.
If you did this.
If they do it this way, they can do it with a lot.
I mean, if we don't have this, we'd almost have to hire a full-time building inspector if these things started to work out.
It'd do, not only would it cause that kind of a problem, but it would then also raise havoc with property values. When we started this rated development bylaw, it was because in the 1990s, we were the ninth fastest growing community in the Commonwealth. Primarily because building lots were 15, 16, 18,000. When we mandated this, it had the supply and demand effect where all of a sudden, building lots became much more valuable. And today, I look with the MLS, the MLS VACs and figures, average building lot in town is selling for $63,000. So it has had many, many positive effects on the town and I'd like to see it continue. So I propose that the planning board support the rated development bylaw in position again and get it back on the books.
As a cost measure and as a development, a control development measure.
Absolutely.
The quality of life.
Quality of life, but I think we should put in there a cost control measure for the town. Because I think that's a pretty important.
That's part of our problem.
That's part of the problem. I think it shows that we're trying to be responsive. I think that, that would be a good.
And to realize that subdivisions, every tax dollar coming in from a residential home costs the town more than the dollar.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-seven or something.
That's right.
Do you have that, any documentation somewhere?
Yes, somewhere.
Could you find it? I mean, that would be really.
Somewhere.
We'd get on board with the judge.
Yeah.
The judge would have it.
So, but when they were looking at, actually, and we were looking at conservation land and people saying, oh my goodness, we'll lose all that tax money. Well, it costs the town 60 cents of the dollar kind of thing for conservation land, whereas a residential property costs about 27.
Just look at the lone road up there. They're starting to develop that and the town is going to have to rebuild that whole road.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they say they're not going to have to, but sooner or later, you put four or five half million of those homes up there, they're going to be in the selectmen's office.
I thought we voted to buy that land and what, it fell through?
It fell through. They couldn't get the approval for it.
So we did approve what required of that.
Yeah, we did the A and R's, yeah.
A motion to accept, to recommend that the planning board endorse the rated development bylaw. Second. All in favor?
Did we make a motion?
We did. I did.
All right.
Both so over.
That was easy.
With the other two, I think that we should just basically say that people came out and this is what happened because it'd be real high for me to, anyway, for us to be unanimous would be difficult.
Well, you don't have to be unanimous.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Peter?
We can, we can remain neutral or we can take a position. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to take a position on yours. So let's discuss prohibition of soils. I thought the discussion was excellent, especially for the limited amount of people over there. And I.
Actually, I understand it now. It's really just hazardous materials. So soil silken come in, it's just, it specifies hazardous.
Well, you have to ask yourself, what defines hazardous material? Is it that it has hazardous things in it? Or is it a hazardous material defined under 310 CMR 40?
Right. So that stuff goes to the windfalls. But anyway.
Well, what, what, well, I don't understand this way. I forgot to ask this question. He was, his article is to prohibit soils under these DEP regulations. Is that the RS1 soils and RS2 soils?
RCS.
RCS soils.
My understanding is he wants to prohibit those two types of soil. Under RCS1, RCS dash 1, I believe there are six or seven categories. Starts out with pretty clean and ends up with the, the last four I read tonight. Type, 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 you know, coming industrial ways where there's metal plating and whatnot. The first three or the first two could probably be allowed without consequence. And I think that's your point, Mary Ann. You can't throw a blanket and deny all of them because some of them are hazardous.
There's noise, well, plus the, it's same.
Well, according, according to the DEP law or the, what's called Massachusetts Contingency Plan, 310 CMR 40, they're not regulated, RCS1 and RCS2 are not regulated. You can go, you can up deposit them at risk. You get caught, you get in some trouble.
The, his, his section that says the DEP policy, call 97 dash 001, 90007, the low soil types?
No.
No, they're the policies.
Hazardous soils mentioned in those policies and specifies.
Okay, okay, that's what I meant.
Just the hazardous ones.
Okay, the hazardous materials.
Any hazardous waste or contaminated soils, so.
So these RS1 and RS2 are contaminated?
Not the water.
They're contaminated, but they're not necessarily hazardous in the eyes of the, of the DEP. In the eyes of Mark, I believe he thinks they are. But I can't speak for him. I believe they're fine, myself.
Well, we don't, we don't have those to discuss right now. You know, that, that's not in his.
Yeah, it's not there, so.
It's not in his initiative petition, so.
Okay.
And conversely, under, under Mary Ann, the way I read it, is in, under one or something, you say, you know, well, it can't, can't come in unless it meets local state and, well, in your, that law would also allow the materials that I described as having such and such a concentration. So.
As long as you're protecting the water and air and you can prove it, so. Well, so you can deny things if soils are contaminated.
Well, we're not talking about yours yet, so let's, let's stick with.
Mark's, Mark's would perhaps need a word of clarification or something to it. Can the planning board, as planning board members, not as citizens, but as planning board members, come to his assistance if we think we want it to go in a certain way or another way? Or is he on his own? Or is he on his own? And Mark, you've got to learn from your presentation tonight, learn from the questions and figure out what to do.
No. The discussion I had with Attorney Dineski last week specifically was about how to hold the hearing and what changes can be made at the hearing. No changes to either one of these bylaws could be made at the hearing. Changes, however, can be made in the process of the town meeting by proposing amendments with a second and discussion and vote on the amendments. Any amendment proposed, it can be of two types. If it's a friendly amendment and the maker of the motion accepts it, it's not a big deal. If it's just an amendment and the maker, and it's not allowed as a friendly amendment, then it needs to be seconded, discussed, and voted on. If it's a simple majority vote to allow the amendment, it then becomes part of the motion. So that's on the town meeting floor.
I'm the maker of this. If I were to say if a friendly amendment to it be changing the thirty days to forty-five days, is.
Well, you could make a friendly amendment to your own, but, you know, it essentially would be.
But I would have to accept.
I said, Mary Ann, would you accept the substitution of the planning board for the building inspector?
Yeah.
As a friendly amendment, and you said yes, then we could go through. It's probably the easiest way we can do that on the floor, except, as you said.
Submit the whole thing.
And you submitted the whole thing as the corrected amendment. I don't know, that may, that may be difficult because it's published as this. They may not allow that. It may have to go down as.
I asked a question to the town administrator, the grader.
Yeah.
And she said I couldn't amend it at town meeting.
You couldn't?
I could.
Yes, you can, that's what I said. Right.
It's a little meticulous, a little.
Yeah.
It's a pain in the neck because you've got such a big proposal with so many amendments.
Right. When did you get it in?
Fifth of March or something like that.
The real one?
Oh, the real one was like on the seventh.
I think what happened, though, is she, she gave one to them with the, attached with the signatures.
Yes.
By law, I think they have to put that in because that's what the people sign.
They signed just that sheet of paper, and I told them I was writing it. They didn't see it, anyway.
Yeah, but it said on there that, that, so they.
And I gave her, what happened was I gave Anita the draft and said, can you check with town council to see if there should be a general bylaw, a zoning bylaw? I don't know what I'm doing with the numbering, and is this right? Is this the right process for this?
Well, I think, did you ever get a response from town council?
No, I got nothing from town council. I never heard from anybody, nobody. She didn't.
Well, we had several, several interesting items that fell through the cracks between the transitions.
Yeah, I understand it was during a transition.
Would it make it hard for you, or would this hurt?
Yeah, I did ask the questions. I'm not quite sure how this fits, what's the best fit for it.
Well, as I, I don't know if I told everybody, but Mary Ann and I sat down last Friday, and we went through the whole thing, making some of the different corrections that we agreed on. And that's the annotated subject that you have, I mean, the annotated copy that I sent you today, so.
And they would more or less be friendly, friendly.
Right, it's, it's what Mary Ann originally thought was gonna be.
If you made the, you made all these changes, and you showed us, say, I'm gonna make a friendly amendment, would she accept them? And she said yes, then you don't have to vote on it.
Well, it's up to the town meeting. I'm not sure if they, they have to vote on it at all, but, you know, it's gonna be tough.
It would probably be good to have a clean copy
Yeah.
with those changes that, because that would say, okay, does everyone get, make, understand this? So any way you see this, this word is being put in there, but.
Might, might you use the track changes feature where you cross out what you had and you highlight what you're putting in right there, and then you go down, there's another one, and another one, another. If you projected that, well, if you projected that, everybody would see, it used to be thirty days, now it's forty-five days. That's how it used to be, good documents.
Yeah, yeah.
Stick them to the wall.
Are you okay with that sixty days that I said?
Yeah.
Well, let's talk about Mary Ann while we're doing this.
Well, I had just a couple of things that I had asked Mary Ann, is that the approval deadlines, she has it forty-five days, and I asked her if she would change that to sixty days because it's just.
Major, you got the atomic.
Page ten.
Okay.
Only because.
On the J.
On the J, yeah. Because I think six, forty-five days is in our schedule, in our calendar.
It's tough.
It's tough.
Then this is why we do this, is picking up on some of this stuff is.
And then on the other page, on page.
We, we changed it up above in section G from thirty days to forty-five days.
Right.
The public hearing.
The open public hearing, yeah.
And there was the one I saw.
You guys continue it, right? It's not complete.
Yeah, the other one I saw was the town administrator was gonna do something that it should be complaining for.
Well, that's on the section.
Before.
Twenty-one point eight B fines.
Yeah, we go back to J for a second.
Sure.
On the third line down, we gotta make sure we change where it said.
Building inspector for all state.
Yeah, make sure we put forty-five days to sixty there.
Yeah, exactly.
Where that, what the.
Bottom of page.
Right, and it's where there's words.
Yeah, the words.
J, one to the third line down, like we said.
Well, we got like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We got a month and a half to do this, right?
Sure. I had a week.
You had a weekend.
And then also, guys, on, on the same thing, on the very last line, it says, again, it says such forty-five day period.
And the next to the last line, it also has forty-five, so you gotta change both of those to sixty.
It does.
Which probably can.
And then you really threw us a curve because one, you put in numerical, next to your, your right.
It's by, I dictated.
Well, here it is, yeah, the planning is this one.
I talked, I talked into the computer.
And that's how it came out?
Yeah.
One, one came out numerically, one came out.
Yeah.
So page thirteen? B, number twenty-one, point eight B.
Initiated by.
The planning board.
And the fines. You want to change the words, town administrator, planning board.
Okay.
You guys agree with that, or?
Yeah, definitely.
And again, in the next line, change town administrator to planning board.
Get this to.
And then, let's see, there's another spot too.
I wonder about that one, if those are the plan, the fines being issued, can, does it have to be done by the town administrator?
Any other corrections?
So basically, all the changes, it's just a few grammatical errors.
Fourteen, page fourteen, again, we take twenty-one point nine transitional rules, one, two, three, four, five sentences down, building inspector to planning board.
They issue.
If the planning board determines in its reasonable that such a person has not filed a required application, pill of inspection.
Okay, so we get everything we need on this?
Maybe I was thinking of him as the public planning board enforcing it personally, holding for it.
So we, we, do we want to recommend? Is that your question? Do we want to recommend? Do we want to just write a report?
I think we have to be made aware of something. I thought the lawyer did respond in some fashion, and I can't remember what he said.
About what?
About these articles.
He did. He responded and said that they were not mutually exclusive, that they could be passed and coexist, basically. But he didn't do any of the stuff that we've done.
And he didn't really review the words.
Correct.
He didn't really review the, he didn't answer the question, the constitutionality that he did on the other one.
Right.
So.
But it can be done.
Do we ask him?
I don't think we, I don't think we need to. I'll say.
We go see the county jail's office and need to approve or deny it.
Yeah, but then we've got to.
No, it, it becomes effective until it's reviewed by the attorney general. And I don't, I don't have any recollection of Joe Biden's comments being negative to either one. They can both exist, is basically what he said.
They said they were complementary to each other?
Don't say that. They just can exist.
Something like, if the town's crazy enough to pass them both.
Yeah.
Pretty much is what it is.
They're gonna have it.
I don't know that's the.
So yours is first and then Mark's is second, which is actually the best of all.
So anyways, if we, you know, I, I agree with everything that we've changed here. I would like to see other changes. I don't know if you read the ones I put in.
I hadn't.
What I put in and you received at the janet made, the changes are not what Mary Ann is agreeing to, okay? These were my notations. So for instance, Article thirty-two, twenty-one point two applicability, page nine, that is, at the, where it says maybe used as fill in town, I would insert, that's what I put on the, the list, included but not limited to ICS1 and ICS2 type soils for 310 CMR 40.
So I'll go back and bow this chair.
Let's get.
So you want, you, you want to include those that in there?
Correct.
And what do you think?
Thinking how it covers it, which written.
So you don't like that so much?
That's all.
No.
Well, then we'd have to make.
All right, so then, the next one, I'll see.
Mary Ann, can I just ask a question? Mary Ann, when you say debris, glass, metal, toxic, infectious, radioactive, by toxic, you mean hexadon chrom?
Sure. So there shouldn't be any in there, except when it might be naturally occurring, it's possible.
Well, if you, if you start saying that, then you fall into the DEP definition of what's naturally occurring.
That chromium is in vitamins.
I understand that many of these things can be nutrients at the micronutrient level, and they're toxic when they're big, and they're carcinogenic when they're big. Everything, copper.
Oh, good trans.
Not lead, but not mercury, not hexadon chrome. Elemental chrome, yes. But my point is.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Well, it isn't applied until it's not, I don't know, it's a policy or anything.
Well, let's go back to this. Section, page ten, section E, site plan requirements.
Page ten?
Right.
Okay.
Section E, site plan requirements. A site plan is required to meet the requirements of twenty-one point five B of this bylaw. And Mary Ann points out many, many in that, and I also would add, and meet the requirements of Article nine, site plan approval, which is our zoning bylaw already in effect, which we have. All the things that I'd like to see included in it as well.
Just follow that one?
All right, thank you. Page eleven.
What about page ten here? Hired by P and G and paid for by applicant.
Oh, good, you picked that one up.
Yep.
That's where I put in the same thing that we were talking about in the hearing, is a Massachusetts licensed, Massachusetts licensed site professional hired by the permit granting authority and paid for by the applicant who approved the original soil management plan.
You okay with that?
Yeah. Basically, that's what we were doing anyway. Page eleven, going down to section B, site plan, number six. I, I just basically repeated it, and, and other conditions stated in Article nine, Article nine, site plan approval of Hubbardton zoning bylaws. You know, when you do these bylaws, if you're not specific to the, to the ninth degree, you need to be.
You okay with that one?
Yeah. Page twelve, it goes on to say, the last sentence on page eleven carries over to twelve. And fill materials shall have no concentration of oil, hazardous material, toxic substance, infectious biological material greater than federal, state, or reportable or action criteria, or material greater than pre-filled conditions prevailing in the area to be filled. And I wanted to add, soils defined by MGL CM 310 40 as ICS1 and ICS2 are specifically prohibited to be used as fill.
I assume you don't want that.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. ICS2, maybe.
So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to build your, we're trying to build your, your proposal so that we all are on the same page. And if it's fine, great, and if you don't agree with it, that's okay because, you know.
Well, this leaves you know it's coming at the town meeting.
Right.
And you'll be able to get prepared, right?
Well, no, it may not come at all. I mean, it could be, it could be part of whatever she wants to do at the town meeting, that's all.
Yeah, but you could make, we could, anyone else.
Anybody could amend it.
To make good that, if we wanted to.
All right, so, page twelve, number, section eleven, I'm sorry, section L. Third line down, prior to filling at any time during a permitted filling activity, inspection of the premises may be, may be made by the permit granting authority or its agents with or without advanced notice to determine whether or not the provisions of town bylaws are any permit up being complied with. Advanced notice gives them chances to.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we ready in a week.
Say twenty-four hours. So that somebody opens the gate.
Yes.
I said, that's me, yeah.
Great, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Everything else, page thirteen, it's just changing building inspector or town administrator to planning board. And on page fourteen, again, building inspector to planning board, transitional rules. That's all I had. And now we know what it says, let's discuss. Does anybody have any input to this?
So I'm, you were talking, you were talking earlier in the meeting, there was something in there that you didn't like about, I forget how you put it. You, you and Peter and Paul.
All right, I say if you give it to Joe, you gotta give it to me.
Can you explain that again?
Well, I think Ed Blanchard did pretty good, Joe. He said that to regulate is to allow.
Correct.
You might allow with different conditions, but you will find it very difficult to prohibit or deny a permit. And this goes for anything as simple as a driveway grant. You know, you've got to have a five-foot radius on your pullout or something, you know, some such criteria. And you only have a four-point-eight foot, so you go in there, you say, give me a variance to it. And the planning board says, no, so you go to the zoning board of appeals. And you get a four-point-eight, four-point-eight feet is okay. Uh, we want five, so four is okay, and you get your driveway grant. And I think that's reasonable.
Could this all be appealed to the zoning board of appeals? This regulation?
It's a bylaw.
It's a decision, a decision could be, yes.
Well.
No, I, no, I don't believe it could be, actually, because it has to be, in order to have a ZVA hearing, you have to show a hardship. By, by not following ZVA rules does not constitute a hardship.
Yeah, but denying it.
I mean, not, by not following zoning rules does not constitute a hardship. Being denied a permit on the zoning does not constitute a hardship.
Or being too strict on a permit, could be.
There's four-point-eight instead of a five-foot radius. There's four-point-eight instead of a five-foot radius causing a hardship. I'm denying a driveway permit, without a driveway permit, I can't put a house there. I don't know if that's true.
Yeah.
I'm exaggerating to, to make the point.
Well, I just did this as a question.
So my point is to regulate is to allow, and you can set different conditions, you know, you've gotta have.
As long as you're protecting those interests, you're fine.
But see, the problem I have too is that, you know, if you put one of these things on any street, you know, we're gonna put it at the end of Parsons Road, the town owns thirty acres of land. Okay, and the town realizes they can get six dollars a ton, or six dollars a yard for this stuff. And they just stop, the trucks stop rolling. There could be a private person, doesn't have to be the town. It's not really fair to the people that live on that road. And this doesn't allow you to deny it because these people don't like it. Unless we put something here, because you put something.
When the voters come, they have concerns. If they can't answer those concerns, then you don't have them. If they can't address the concerns.
But it doesn't say that, yeah.
It does.
Just like the DEP with the big permit we talked about. They say the town is allowed to comment on dust, traffic, noise, hours of operation. And so you can always find solutions to those things. But the town is not allowed to figure out what kind of dirt's allowed.
I know this too because when I.
I know the earth filling, you can't.
In here?
Yes.
In yours?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll see.
You can't allow anything that's hazardous, it's in there.
Yeah, but everyone is.
Yes, but the DEP defines hazardous as worse than the stuff we're talking about, ICS one and ICS two in their definition.
As worse than what's on the site that you're bringing it to.
No.
It has to be.
It's got the factors in there of ten.
You don't have to follow that with this earth filling bylaw. You don't need to follow that policy.
But then they, they can appeal it.
No, it's a policy. That's for gravel pit filling under DEP's rules. This is Hubbard's rules.
Where does it, well, where does it say you won't exceed the. Where does it say you won't exceed the native soils of Hubbard's, not the native soils of the state analysis?
Of the, of the site that you're bringing it to.
When the state defined native soils, they went out and sampled places. Springfield, Worcester, along the Mass Turnpike, and they got what I would consider contamination in those soils. And they measured it. And they said, that's native soils. It's not in some farmer's field at Hubbard's that has anything in it. They determined that native soils were these things with levels of contaminants. I guarantee you.
They're talking about the specific site.
No, no.
We're talking about.
This is the background documents that went into similar soil policies.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
They tested in Worcester, they tested in Springfield.
That's not fifteen oh one, that's similar soil policy, it's different.
That's what fifteen oh one relies on.
Where does it say in here that they can't put anything more than, than the, what does it say? I don't see any, I read this, and I don't see where it says, you can't bring anything in that exceeds our soils.
Well, environmental monitoring plan to maintain and protection of human health, public safety, welfare, and the environment during and following the fill operations.
So if this goes into the Hubbard's zoning bylaws, then what's going to be applicable is the definition of hazardous waste, toxic or hazardous materials under the, as defined in the Hubbard's zoning bylaws. And that reads, "Any substance or mixture of such physical, chemical, or infectious characteristics as pose a significant, actual or potential hazard to water supplies or other hazard to human health if such substance or mixture were discharged to land or waters within the town of Hubbard's. Toxic or hazardous materials include, without limitation, organic chemicals, petroleum products, heavy metals, radioactive or infectious wastes, acids and alkalides, and include such products as pesticides, herbicides, solvents, and thinners." Now, that's the definition of hazardous waste in our zoning bylaw.
What does it pose or what does it not pose?
Toxic or hazardous materials include, without limitation, organic chemicals, petroleum products, heavy metals, radioactive or infectious wastes, acids and alkalides, and include such products as pesticides, herbicides, solvents, and thinners.
Where are you reading this?
Get it to fill, it's there. Primitive fill.
Oh, right.
Clean sand, gravel, clay.
Because the word significant is there.
Alright, hold on. Any substance, this is the definition of toxics or hazardous materials under our zoning bylaws. This is the definition of it. Any substance or mixture of physical, chemical, or infectious characteristics as to pose a significant, actual, or potential hazard to water supplies or other hazard to human health such substance or mixture were discharged to land or waters within the town of Hubbard's.
So it's significant comma, actual comma, or potential.
As opposed as a significant, actual, or potential.
Yeah.
Is it significant comma or significant?
Significant comma.
Ah, so it's all three of those. So it doesn't have to just be significant, the actual or potential.
Because the, the reason I'm contemplating this is the.
It's a title define, define significant.
The DEP regulations rely on the word significant. It's not significantly more contaminated than native soils. It does not impose a significant risk, does not do significant harm to the environment, you know. They use that word all over, but and that's the word they hide behind, you know, what's significant? Not significant to you, you live in Boston, we live out here.
See, what I don't understand is that, because it says here, you, right here.
Where?
Oh, twenty-one point six standards for filling.
Age?
Uh, eleven, at the bottom. All fill, fill materials shall include only clean sand, gravel, clay, quarry rock, or some surface products free from solid waste. Okay, now, the DEP is regulating that dirt. I don't, I don't wanna talk, well, no, it is all, they are, the stuff that, you know, people wanna bring into the town is regulated by DEP.
And, and us?
But I'm just saying, just, everyone seems to focus on DEP here, so if DEP is regulating it, it's solid waste.
That's why they came up with the policy, because they couldn't regulate it. Because it wasn't waste, it wasn't hazardous, they could not regulate it under three-ten CMR four.
Why?
Because it wasn't hazardous. It did not fit their criteria or hazardous material.
They declared it non-hazardous, they didn't prove it by risk analysis or other means.
It was not something that DEP could control under the current laws. So they had to find a policy to allow clean fill to be moved so that people had some confidence.
But I, I understand what you're saying, Mary Ann, but if I go out and take a dirt, a real barrel full of dirt, okay? That's clean dirt, okay? And it's not controlled by DEP. They're controlling this stuff because it isn't, or potentially it could be.
People asked them to control it.
Well, see, none of this is written down though, I mean, this is, they have these policies, they can, you can change a policy like you can change your underwear. I mean, that's, I understand, with the Department of Agriculture, they have all these policies. And I say that policy's wrong, and they go, yeah, well, we're not gonna change it. Why? You can, you agree with me, but they don't wanna change it. It's exactly the same thing here. I think this is what Tom gets at. You know, this is just, I'm not saying it cavalierly, but this is some guy decides he's gonna do it, I'm sure.
Did you watch the PowerPoint presentation online? It sort of describes the process they went through to get to that policy.
I did, I did do that, and I understand that, but I, I just, I don't trust the government. That's, maybe that's what it is. I'm gonna have to go for Tom.
Not to edit.
I gotta edit, yeah. Just kidding. I'm just saying, that's why, like, and that's why I said that tonight at the meeting. If, if you could believe them, it, it sounds, and this is what I think, I believe this law, you know. I mean, I think they're, they're, you know, they wanna do the best thing for the town, and they believe it. I just don't believe it. I'm sorry. I just don't believe that many people, there's so much money involved. And there's so many people involved, I just don't think it's possible. You talked about these bill of lading. You know, we used to deliver stuff all over the state. Say, oh, you need a bill of lading. Oh, yeah, well, there, there, no lading. Give them a bill of lading. They print them by the thousands, and they have them online. Bill of lading is nothing more than someone saying this is what's in there, but that, there's no proof of what's in there.
So people are bringing soil into town. They're bringing soil into town today.
But they're doing it under an agricultural exemption, I believe.
No, they're not. That's actually a commercial building site, you're allowed to do that. That's a commercial site.
And none of that is being regulated by us at all?
It's not, but, but.
It should be.
No, I don't, you can't reg, you can't regulate that.
If you're bringing in several hundred truckloads of fill.
They're not bringing that much fill in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of fill that went in there.
Well, that's something the building inspector should be on top of.
What are they using?
I don't know.
It's coming from Richard's pit and garden.
They got no Dave Richards. There could be a hazardous waste in that stuff.
No, that's a different Dave Richards.
No, it's a different Dave Richards. It's Dave Richards.
I thought you wanted to open a hazardous waste pit.
No, 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 Dave, no, Dave, that guy, Dave Richards is a really, really good guy.
I took it all back. He's a captain.
Well, where the hell has a right to walk in here and take samples?
And it's also, it's also got a DEP number up there.
It's, it's well, and, yeah.
So, I mean, that's my, I, I agree with, with, obviously with Jassy because we talked about this in late. By allowing it, you're inviting people to come in. And I mean, I could buy the lot next to you and just stop filling there. There's not damn thing you can do about it.
Unless you have this permit.
You know, so I get the permit, so, you know, if I'm gonna make ten million dollars, what's a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of permitting fees? But it may destroy your way of life and your, your property.
So it's clean?
No, it's not. What about, there's a tri-coz of material going down. There's no provision in here to, you can say you can regulate it, but if you can say, okay, we'll regulate it, we'll only allow two trucks a day in there, choo, court case. This, that's, that's ridiculous, that's all we're doing. See, this is the, this is the problem I have.
It's quite right still. We should be able to use our land the way we see fit without impacting the public interest.
Right.
So people should be able to use their property, be able to fill, create a flat piece of land, say, as long as the interests are protected.
Right.
So by doing, in order to protect those interests, we regulate it.
But if you do that next to your house, you could devalue your property significantly. And that, that's not fair. And if you have to listen to these trucks like we have to do every day, and I live in the center of town, so you hear there's these jake breaks going on every, every ten minutes, be filling some over there with the country cat. That's spoiling my way of life, my, my life, you know, and why does it, why is a bit, why was one building, built Orlando, and it had the right to destroy my life or my property or the value of my property?
Permanently or temporary?
Well, it could be permanently.
Common, yeah. Well, somebody allowed a dozen dogs behind my house. There's a kennel back there. There's twelve German Shepherds.
But you can report that, that's against.
Well, they got, they got a permit, and I got a note, a bar notice.
Right.
They do bark a lot.
I know, but you can make, you can make a complaint and tell them that they have to stop these dogs.
We do that kennel permit, that's one of the biggest things we do. You know, that's one of the major, the major complaints that we have, and.
As long as they don't get out any of my chickens.
But we.
Everybody, but they should have the right to be able to have dogs on their property and have a kennel. And the impact to me is a little bit. Sometimes I get annoyed that the dogs are barking incessantly for half an hour.
Yeah, but say you go to, say, it doesn't bother me. We used to have a lady across the street that had a hound dog that barked every three seconds. The dog never slept. We never heard it, we never heard it after a while. No, I never hear. We have people come to our house and say, how can you stand that dog barking? So, so you wanna, you have this problem, you don't really hear it as much, it doesn't bother you, but go try to sell your house. And you have twelve dogs barking constantly down there, people looking at your house, you're not gonna be able to sell it. That's not fair to you. And then why should they have this big kennel up there and destroy your piece of life or your property of life? That's just, I mean, I understand the philosophical difference that one may have, but. The other problem, survey, after survey in this town, they just did one for the town center survey, do you have to crap that? People, the biggest complaints people have is road noise.
Road kill?
Road noise.
Road noise.
Road noise is a huge complaint. And a lot of people kinda say.
On Main Street?
On sixty-eight, right. And they, one of the, one of the things that people want is to maintain the rural characteristics of the town. Track the trailers going through every five minutes. And then the other thing they complain about is the amount of traffic down here.
That's regulated, the one under the by.
Traffic?
The amount of trucks.
Not on a highway sixty-eight, it doesn't stay highway, you cannot regulate, town can't regulate a state highway.
But you can regulate how many trucks go in and out of the property.
Yeah, but you can't overregulate, you can't say one a day.
No.
You can't prohibit the freezing road.
Right.
You can't have a stoplight, you can slow them down and stop them and put up a red-green stoplight.
But my, my point is that the people in this town, all the open space survey, both of them, they did the town center survey, they wanna live in a rural, quiet town.
The master plan survey.
Same thing, exactly. They, they all want the same thing. And I talked to a couple of planners, everyone in the state wants, that's what they want.
The, the traffic issue, I don't know if it really clicked, but, you know, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand trucks. That's simple math. And, and they can, as a town, you cannot regulate traffic on a state highway. It's a state's highway, not a town's.
Yeah, but you can regulate the number of trucks and the time of day.
You can, you can set hours that are reasonable. You can't say, sorry, you can only work on Monday.
Right.
So it's a Monday through Friday and part of the center. And you can, for instance, not very far from right where we're sitting, there's the school and the whatnot, and buses, and and it gets really pretty crowded. There's people walking across the street, there's policemen out there every day. I live right near there, I see it. It's very, very congested for an hour in the morning and an hour at night. Everybody's in their car lined up on the sidewalk picking up their kid and all this stuff. And.
So if you find out what the route is, you say.
Trucks rolling through there.
Nine o'clock. You can't do it till school's in session.
Yeah, but they can.
You can say, well, I, I start work at seven. I'm a regular seven-to-three construction guy.
Not long.
But I can guarantee.
It will happen if they appeal it, either to the zoning board of appeals or.
You save people, but first of the town doesn't have the money to enforce that.
Well, watch this. I was at, I was at the Main Street Committee meeting. And a selectman said that a red, yellow, green light costs two-hundred, I think it's two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars installed.
So you get the proponent wherever that is to install it.
When the whole citizenship has to put up with a red light.
Do we want a red, you know, green light at an intersection that today closed? But, you know, there'd be one, one for instance, just as a sample, of Portugal Road on Route sixty-eight. There might be one at Williams Road, there might be one at the school, there might be one down at sixty-two, because they can come in on sixty-two too, east-west, state highway. So you very quickly spend a million dollars just controlling traffic that you didn't have last year.
And it's not, not, we're not even discussing whether it's in the, even the Fitchable region, it can be anywhere.
Country, the trucks are coming in and out. Are they going by the school?
They're going right by my house, there, and right up the hill.
So with an earth filling bylaw, you can regulate the time of the day that you can.
I, I understand what you're saying. You can, you say you can, but the town doesn't have the money to enforce or fight that legally.
Do they want a permit? Do they want, do they want?
This is in the DEP, this is in the state, which has unlimited amount of assets. But I think that's maybe where we may have a little bit of a different agreement. We can't get the town to enforce a damn bylaw for the signs. We can't make people take down, GFA, which is a huge bank, is, is in violation of this town's zoning sign law.
Grandfather?
No.
No.
They weren't, they weren't, and they just do it. So if we can't get a sign changed, how in God's name is the town going?
Well, if somebody wants a permit.
I know, but.
This is what you, you do.
I know, but they just, what I'm saying to Mary Ann is that you say, okay, they just, you just permit it. Okay, and if they don't like to permit, then they can fight it in court. Well, the town doesn't have the money, I mean, the town.
Don't border pay.
We did permit that kennel.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is that we don't.
They bill the box in the town.
What I'm saying is that we just don't have, the town doesn't have the resources to enforce even a sign by law. How in God's name is it gonna have enough resources to enforce something like this? I just, and even if you, even if you wanted to do it.
Now, let's face it, you know, I think that, I think that six-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is, is what I tried to get on record tonight. Is that this is. is that this is, this is designed for the, the product that's being brought in, proposed to be brought in, which just is-
Well, what happened was, we were sitting at the table in-
In the low room, yes.
And you all chose, either you ban it, I said, well, there's a way to regulate it, and, and this is designed to deny it even.
Very difficult. Well, Mr. Brown did say tonight that the state is looking for sites. He said that.
And I assume that he knows where he's talking about, because he's pretty up on this stuff. And he kept saying, they're looking for all these sites in Massachusetts, and they're gonna just start hauling this ground. So, you know, what, I don't really care about his proposal so much, but if Hubbard's designated a site, you know-
If we allow it.
If we allow it, these people have millions and millions of dollars. I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars worth of tipping fee or fees that these people are gonna be paying, you know?
You know, I, I had a conversation with the gentleman that's in charge of the conservation committee in Rutland.
Oh, Joe Doncor.
What's his name?
Joe Doncor.
Yep.
Was he gonna come today?
He was supposed to come tonight, but he obviously didn't make it. And his, his bottom line advice was, if you can stop it, stop it. It was an absolute nightmare for Rutland. You know, the stuff that they're putting on the fields is stuff that comes out of the-
MWRA.
MWRA waste treats.
They put sludge on it.
Sewer sludge?
Yeah, uh, yeah, drinking water, uh, sludge, when they clean the drinking water.
Yes, they take all the metals out, they put it back in and suck it out?
And it goes into the wastewater.
Probably precipitate it out.
And it has nothing to do with the, that filling wall, so they're using it for fertilizer.
Do they precipitate out the metals?
I don't. According to, according to the gentleman from Rutland, the biggest problem is the abuses. That you have to grid out everything, but there still is contaminants that end up in there because they don't get sampled properly. They, he claimed that even, they even had, um, a couple of gypsy trucks come in from Seabrook Milkley plant, that they don't know where they are. They had a state trooper that stopped the trucks on Route sixty-eight and had thirteen thousand dollars' worth of fines for overloaded trucks. One day, um, he told me that they've been trying to plant down there in those fields and nothing's growing. They're having a terrible time getting-
They're up to that point already? I thought they were still bringing it in.
Still bringing it in, but it's not growing the way they already brought it in. Um, the bottom line came down to the town of Rutland, where it became such a huge money-making factor that, you know, he claims people were persuaded to allow it to happen, and it's, you know, it's not the beneficial answer.
Rutland, the ten cents a ton is forty thousand dollars.
Well, Rutland is, I was talking to the town administrator in Rutland today, and she told me they had ten cents a ton, and it was a total of twenty thousand dollars, and that they've been short-changed because that's what their fees were. They can't collect any more fees.
Peanut.
It's absurd. It's a ridiculous amount. And it's got nothing to do with tipping fees. Those are the fees that they can collect. They can't go over a certain amount of money to collect, so, um, overall, it was not a positive experience with, with Rutland. And, you know, I, I was, I was pretty amazed at what conservation gentleman was telling me about the process that they had, and, uh, the, the effect on the community. It's been very polarizing, and it's been a very, very prejudiced situation where people are worried about, you know, how did they get the permits? Who gave them the permit? Why did they get them the permit? A lot of money. When there's a lot of money, there's a lot of questions to be asked.
They did it without any permits at all?
They began that, and then they caught it.
Lighthouse Realty. Lighthouse Realty.
No, it's not Lighthouse Realty. It's Lighthouse Environmental.
Okay.
Yeah, he's out of, well, he's one man. He's brokers these days.
Dirt brokers.
Dirt brokers.
Yeah, dirt brokers. One-man show, and he just-
And he's making all the money.
Yeah, taking a ton.
Nobody.
We're, we're ahead of the game in, in many respects. Rutland, it happened without the townspeople knowing about it. Dudley, I've looked into that. I haven't asked, talked to anybody down in Dudley, but, um, I'm pretty confident if you ask the general citizenship what's going on, nobody would know. It was one public hearing on a conservation commission question. The rest were just letters signed through, processed through, permit. So we're ahead of the game in the sense that at least we have some citizen awareness. I think our job is to raise the citizen awareness. Give them choices. Let them deliberate. Let them think. Let them vote, and then where the chips fall, they fall. But I don't believe, um, like tonight's hearing, it's gonna, it's gonna be, what do we have? I think there are twelve people.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, kind of sixteen? Well, four of them were from a proponent. They weren't necessarily even townspeople. So it's really difficult to get the word out. How do we do that? I, I'm not talking about one or the other. I'm talking about-
Their warrants, you'd think.
Well, they may not have got, they may not have read the notice on the hearing. That's the difference.
The warrant was put out, but the hearing's not well defined. The back page of the warrant didn't state the time.
So anyways, I think we, I think we've, we've still got to beat this one up to death, man. So-
Well, what do we do for a report?
Well, the question is, do, do, does, he, getting late. My merge get wixed. Um, does the planning board wish to make a recommendation that we adopt this bylaw or not, basically? That's the bottom line.
Talking about Marion's or both of them?
Well, we're new Marion's first, and that was what, what we've been talking about.
Take no action. There's three options. Or take no action.
I stated my opinion in the other room. I said, regulating is allowing. I don't see criteria by which you can deny. Even if we had criteria, there's always appeals. It's a new bylaw. It's not been tested under the angle of court cases and time and efforts. So I think it's a, a difficult thing to do, right out of the box, a new bylaw. And, um, I would prefer prohibition. I also have some concern with the prohibition. Um, it was stated tonight, perhaps correctly, by Bob Bicarski. There are six categories of soil, naturally deposited, oh, in the RSC one and RSC two category. Maybe you're familiar with this table. This is, came out of the Jordan Farm ACU or Soil Sample Plant, but I've seen it in other ones as well. So I believe it's a DEP sourced definition. Naturally deposited soil, not from an area known or suspected, high background levels constituents, arsenic, it's not arsenic belt, it's not Boston blue clay, not proximate to urban fill soil, no Massachusetts continuously planned disposal sites nearby, and no industrial or manufacturing history. I could probably live with that. I don't know what's in it. I'd like to see some analyses of some of that typical stuff. But I could probably live with that. So you say, RCS dash one, category one is allowed. That takes care of all the guys bringing bags of sand or doing septic systems or anything. And categories, you know, maybe two, three, four, five, and six are not allowed, and they're the ones I've read there, you know, when you're, you're tanning operations and welding and, and work like that. That would clarify, I think, both are.
Yes.
Because you have a RSC one, RS one and RS two statement in Marion's article.
I added.
Yeah, that's right. And then twenty-one point two.
Right.
So by clarifying it, you'd allow the clean stuff. And you would disallow the urban fills and the manufacturing process and the, and other stuff. I could, I could probably live with that in either article if it was well defined, but I would prefer a well-written prohibition. I think Mr. Demme is gonna have to add some words, do something to, to address some of the comments there. You know, how much you do it, you know?
I would say, firstly, I would just take no action on either, either one.
What do you think, Phil?
Well, I disagree. I think that if we're gonna be sitting here and going through all of this stuff with the amount of information we know, I, I would take action. And quite frankly, I, I have come to the conclusion, you know, we discussed it, and even with the changes that I've made, that a regulation like this is just too risky to take. I think it's, uh, I think it's, it's a great article. They did a hell of a job, you know, and defended it well.
They did in a weekend.
And it's not, it's not anything personal, of course, but I honestly believe that if we can't do a better job with what we need to say, then I'm in full favor of prohibiting, you know, prohibiting it all. And I, you know, you make good points about what's going in on their country hen and everything else. That's not the issue. You know, the fact of the matter is, is Mr. Brown and his, his gentleman that was there, they all said, you know, what you know is there. We're, we're talking about this, and if that's what we're talking about, that's what we're talking about. I finally got it on record. They have made proposals. And, um, I think that until we're ready to propose something specifically that is going to be beneficial for contractors and homeowners, and even businesses that like to cut the hen, that's one thing. But right now, it's clear what we need to do is stop the earth filling situation that has been proposed and set up, and gravel pits that can happen anywhere else with fill that can come in and be toyed with and played with and contaminate anything. You know, I, I think we gotta take a position on it. I think that's what we're here for.
And I'd like to also make a statement, Marion, in your article, I, I'm saying that it's difficult to regulate. But there's a huge area where we agree. No heavy metals, no, you know, I could go on and on and on, but there's a huge area where we agree. And I want that to be known to you.
Yeah.
Because I'm not trying to say your article is in some way counter to the thinking. Your article's in some con. But I, it's a, it's a new thing. It's a new thing, and it's gonna be difficult. How do we do it? You don't have forty years of wetland protection and a law here.
I need to look up some of those cases, hopefully.
So anyways, let's, let's move on here.
Is there a fill bylaw that exists elsewhere? Is it okay if these laws don't?
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't mean we can't adopt something down, down the road, um, that's gonna suit our needs specifically to the local stuff. The fact of the matter is, this is, in my opinion, this is jeopardizing what we want. We don't want this crap in Boston.
No, we definitely don't.
And that, and this, unfortunately-
I mean, if you, if you, if it was just that one you said, it wouldn't be that big a deal, would it? RCS one-
But it does, type can't-
One, category one.
Oh, okay, but it does, okay, I see what you're saying.
You'd have to prohibit categories two, three, four, five, and six.
Well, we can't do that right now.
No, we don't have the means.
And what we have to do is talk with the recommendation of the planning board, and this is what we have in front of us. And so therefore, that's what-
Now, um, Mark didn't, did Mark put in a size of the project?
Doesn't matter. We're not talking about Mark right now.
Oh, okay. You put in the size of the project?
Yes.
Yeah, what was your size?
Five hundred yards to two, and two thousand yards. So anything under five hundred.
Anything under two thousand?
Between five hundred and two thousand is a smaller permit, and it's basically a shortened form.
We get to look behind the curtain, but it's not, not even-
Yeah, two thousand yards or more.
I'll make another recommendation. Maybe we can compromise this whole thing. Instead of, instead of having this come to a boil in the town floor, we pass over this article, and we'll work on it for the special town meeting that's coming up in the fall.
That'd be a good idea.
Where we, where we don't lose, we try to make it so that we're, we're gonna come out with the, the mechanism and the instrument that's gonna regulate, we're just speaking about, you know, that country hen or whatever it may be. And we don't allow this to end up with the, the weasel clause that lets what we don't want in.
I, I would do that, but I think with all due respect to all the work we did.
Well, it's not, we're not drawing it away from-
No. What I'm trying to say is, we would have to hire some kind of an environmental specialist slash lawyer to work on this one.
No, no. I, I think what we have as a foundation, we could be as specific as we wanted to be, and it may be an extra page, two on the bylaw, but I definitely think we could compose one.
Specifically to-
You know, and, and maybe we have, you know, they'll Murray review it, or somebody review it. That's not the issue. But I think it's better off doing it some, some way like that than it is to have a-
There's a lot of changes in it, though, too. Because there's so many changes, that's, it's, we should tailor it because there are so many changes in it.
It's gonna be confusing, and it's gonna be tough, and if you lose it, you can't bring it back.
What happens if a project gets approved in the meantime?
What kind of project, Tom?
A project that imports this material that I think collectively, we don't wanna see imported.
Okay, well, then, in that case, we have to talk about Mark, but that's the next discussion.
Uh, what about this, the thing you read about zoning that doesn't allow stuff in the town?
It doesn't allow, that, that whole proposal of bringing this stuff in according to current zoning is not allowed.
It's not allowed anyway.
We just can't seem to make that stick.
That's the point. And that's what everybody is trying to do. Mark is trying to make it stick. Mark's trying to make an exclamation point on it, and, and you were trying to regulate the other hole involved, and I think we have a better chance of a prohibition on specific materials than we do losing this and, you know, not being able to regulate everything else. Because I think it's gonna get to the floor, and after twenty minutes of explanation and amending and amending, you know, you gotta get two-thirds vote.
People, you know, you probably lose just because people, people typically don't vote for something they, they don't understand.
So, what, what are we going for? That's, let's, let's get to that. What do you think of that, Marion? I, I just don't wanna belabor this anymore. I think we gotta, we'll make a decision.
But can I add one thing?
Of course you can.
It's not hard for me. That's really hard for me.
I know, because if I said no, you'd do it anyway.
With the provision that we stand before the town need, and I think this is true, and if not, we ought to vote on it, that the planning board is unanimous in that it does not want what is generally referred to as contaminated soil brought into this town for fill, infill, reclamation, you name it, projects. Is that a true statement? And I, and I, maybe we ought to prove it to ourselves by taking a vote, but when I read, you know, industrial, commercial, manufacturing site with a history of tannery and textiles and all, I don't want that one. Urban spill soil, uh-uh. Naturally decreed, deposited marine soils and Boston blue clay. Well, up in the first one, it says, I promise not to bring in blue clay. Then down in the third one, it says you can bring it in. So if, if we can, if we can express ourselves as a board who has studied the issue, understands it to some extent, and we're unanimous in saying we don't want contaminated soil brought into this town used on infill, reclamation, or other type of projects.
But that's not really at, on the law.
I know that's not on the law.
Time, time, wait. Let's get this going out. All Tom wants to do is make the statement that will work on a better bylaw that's going to prohibit these types of things.
It's going to stick. It's going to be effective and stick the, um, the, it's gonna take a lot of work. And the planning board's willing to do that work, and our preliminary position, everybody has to understand where that bylaw's going. It's going towards prohibiting bringing in that kind of material. And that's our little mini-report.
Okay, so what do you think? We'll move to, we'll recommend that this be passed over until we work on a report that's gonna do what we want it to do. We'll move to, we'll recommend that this be passed over until we work on a report that's gonna do what we want it to do. As Tom's described.
And we express to the town.
There's so many amendments in here that it has to go back.
All right, so that, the motion is to not approve this article as written. And that would be our recommendation because we have to have something. But if you stand up and move to pass over this, we don't have to make any recommendations.
Okay.
You know, and it doesn't have to go to the vote, doesn't have to be argued. And we can then make the statement that because of what our discussion was like, because of what our hearing was like, we need to be more specific and we need to work on this article, and that's what we're doing.
That's why we do public hearings.
Yeah, that's why we do public hearings. I mean, that's quite remarkable. It's a great hearing, even though they weren't that many people. And I think it's gonna necessitate you getting reappointed. You're not have to hook it. I'm still, I'm kidding. I mean, but I, I'm serious that, you know, I, I think that's the best compromise we can open right now.
I second that.
All in favor? Oppose? So vote.
Great.
All right, Mark's out.
Did you get that?
What time is it?
Move to not approve that grant.
So, under, under Mark's importation of material bylaw, let's, let's be, let's be succinct about this. The motion is to approve that bylaw. We don't need to discuss this. We just went through this whole thing. He's saying we don't want whatever is there approved, and I agree with him. So, I think we've discussed this already by going through what we've discussed with Tom's discussion and everyone else's. So, we want to recommend that the adoption of the importation of material.
Prohibition.
Well, it's, yeah, prohibitions. This is not written right. This, this did not get written right even in this one.
Mark's here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one, I guess. Article thirty-three?
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
Yeah, it just says importation of material. Nothing says prohibition. We're, that's what the.
Well, no person shall import or.
Right. That's what the body says, but that's not what the headline says. So, it's chapter twenty-seven of the general bylaws, importation of material. And we move to adopt, to approve or to recommend adoption of chapter twenty-seven. That clear?
Yep. Is Mark gonna adjust this?
It's up to him. We'll worry about that later. What we're gonna talk about is what's here.
Okay.
So, Ben made another motion to adopt the provision of importation of.
To support, yeah, to support, the planning board supports article thirty-three.
Yeah.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? So vote.
I'm gonna abstain.
That's it.
Would you refer?
I'll just take it.
Four with one abstentions. Four, zero, one. Okay. Let's move on. We have to make one last decision here. And it's going to be in relation to the master plan. DeKeaton, you all, you had to ask us to commit with another proposal. So, we would need to do this. We would need to go through the warrant. Exactly. Page is on, it's a million minutes.
Ten thousand dollars.
And we would have to change the proposal that we have that.
Fifteen?
What the heck is it?
Fifteen, Article fifteen.
Article fifteen, thank you.
Page five.
Page five. See if the town will vote to transfer from available sun to some ten thousand dollars for the purpose of updating the town's master plan or take any other action relative to that, too. Well, DeKeaton's come up with another method. I hope we, we had a chance to look it over. It's gonna take a little bit more work with the, um, the planning board and other volunteers, but I think it's, it's gonna save the town five thousand dollars, so.
He's gonna have like a facilitator.
Basically, he's, he's gonna lead it. He's gonna lead it, not just facilitate.
Right.
Okay. And we do a rating essentially.
Well, we, we, I think what we would do is gather the information and he would write it, if I read it correctly. That's how we wrote it.
What about the mapping? I didn't get the mapping. I didn't see any of that. I read just very briefly.
Well, see, here, the other part of this is plant, is, part two of this is close along with the rate of development bylaw. Because once we have the rate of development bylaw, we need to continue to work on the master plan. And no matter how we do it, it has to be in conjunction with the rate of development bylaw and master plan. Has to be somehow, someday finished.
I agree.
So.
So, instead, he's asking for forty-five hundred dollars?
Yep. He's coming in with a proposal for, let's see what it is. With a fixed price of ninety-five hundred or a variable price based on continuing the existing contract at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. And that contract may be canceled by the town on a seven-day notice. Actual cost would be managed on a month-to-month basis. The extent that the work is completed by town employees and volunteers, the consultant cost will be reduced. And I think his, his proposal is predicated on approximately forty-five hundred dollars. So, we would amend that article fifteen to make it forty-five hundred dollars.
But if we have to go back and re-ear for another thousand bucks to finish it, that's easier.
Yep. I think that would be the way to go.
On the other hand, that, oh, yeah, the cost would be in the area of thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars in his opening paragraph.
Oh, good. I'm glad you found that. Yes, there it is.
The email.
The email.
The email, yeah.
So, I would, I would propose that if that's what we do, I think it's, I think maybe the only way we get a master plan and it may be just one of those situations where we bite the bullet and get it done.
Do we have funds actually? Planning board funds if the, if, no.
No, we don't have, that was what article fifteen will do.
We're also on with the price that we got from Massachusetts regional.
A hundred and ten thousand. Yeah. Get a grant. Go there and get some grant money.
Well, say that. Maybe we can get a grant for some, some of it as well.
Yeah. We can go to CPA.
Will we?
I think we can.
Our best plan?
Well, let's, let's get the basic in the article. Let's not speculate about whatever.
The finance committee's, they're not recommending it, so it's gonna be, you have to get by the recommendation, but I think.
Well, they have to support their, they have to support their recommendation. We don't. That's the way that goes. And, you know, we're gonna argue for it and let them argue against it if in fact they want it.
Yeah.
If their argument, if their argument against the master plan is as successful as their argument for the available funds for the fireworks play, then if they can prevail, then good luck. What else can you do, right? That's, that's the one, that's their decision, not ours.
Okay.
Very good.
We only spend the fireworks money one thirty-two hundred and twenty-five years.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty?
So, I guess that breaks out pretty good. If we could do it the same way they did it two hundred and fifty years ago, we'd just bring our own guns down and shoot them off.
So, Ben here proposing or recommend to allow the article to be known to more than twenty-five hundred dollars.
Correct. Based on Richard Eaton's secondary.
Which involves a lot of wire work.
We had fire.
Yes.
Ted Curtis paid for those fireworks.
Is that a motion?
I'm sorry, what?
Yep, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Go home.
All in favor? No. We're working on article fifteen, to amend article fifteen to forty-five hundred dollars based on Richard Eaton's.
Second.
Next proposal. Okay?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Oppose?
Sorry, you're supposed to say that.
All right, now, um.
I crutch your pack.
You get all the time for this?
The worst part about it is I'm cooking my own supper again, you know? I don't get a chance to get my, my nurse available.
I should have pizza.
Not this time again. Anyways, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I think you did a great job tonight. Your hearing was great, Marion. I think you did an outstanding job as well as Mike. You know, it was a, it was a good discussion. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us this evening.
So should you, Jerry.
Jimmy, the rant that you used to say, good night, good night.
Oh, good signal.
Caldas.
Hey, Mrs. Caldas. Wherever you are.
Say, Mrs. Caldas. Thank you.
All in favor of a journey?
Yes.
Also vote.